I'm back.
Yes, you are. Okay, good morning. It's Thursday, July 13th. We have open session this morning, and then we'll be going into closed after that for land acquisition. As we always do, let's start with a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Okay, let's jump right into, uh, party. Carroll Commissioner Garen, Mike, what's on your mind?
Sure, thank you. Good morning, Carroll County. I've got a couple of things. First of all, I want to highlight again the, the fire company carnivals that are going to be taking place this summer. There's still quite a few left. Of course, right now, as we speak, the Winfield Fire Company is the 10th of July through the 15th of July. And then down in my neck of the woods, good old Mount Airy, is the 31st of July to the 5th of August. So, again, just imploring people to go out and support your local fire companies. We are, we are in the midst of a transition here in the county, if you will, a hybrid system, if you will, of county employees and volunteers, but we will never and cannot do it without volunteers. That has never been the case, and that will not be the case. So please go out and support your local fire departments. We've got quite a few good carnivals left here. Also, I've been speaking often about the issue of cannabis in the state and the county, and bringing you some of the latest news. I get all my news, a lot of my news, through, again, an organization called LearnAboutSAM.org. SAM being Smart Approaches to Marijuana. I would encourage everybody to go to their website. Wonderful people, people in Maryland. These are Maryland people. And I can report that just a couple of days ago, Prince George's County, now, there's probably not a lot alike between Carroll County and Prince George's County in a lot of ways, totally different counties, different budgets, different everything, but the county, four county council members have proposed a bill that would restrict cannabis businesses to industrial zones, mandate that by, that they have to be 2,500 feet away from land for daycare or school uses, and require building-mounted signs, and it would not be grandfathering any existing shops. The proposal mirrors one winding its way through the legislative process that clamps down on, on smoke shops. So why am I bringing this up every single week? I know some people are probably sick about hearing about it, but, you know, we're going to be grappling with this issue, but we're certainly not alone in our concern. I think some of us feel really strongly about what shouldn't happen here in the county. And you'll notice that counties around the state and some pretty prominent towns and cities like Ocean City, Maryland, Ocean City, New Jersey, Bethany, are taking these same approaches because they're extremely concerned about what this is going to bring, the sale of it will bring to their municipalities and their jurisdictions. And then lastly, we had a very good meeting yesterday with the school board and Dr. McCabe, our superintendent. We spoke a lot about the upcoming budget challenges. You know, as, I represent technically one-fifth of the county. I represent District Four, the southwestern part of the county. But as a parent with kids in the school system, I kind of feel like I speak for a lot of parents. And it's, the, the challenges are definitely not lost on this board and definitely not lost on the Board of Education. I was really pleased with how the meeting went. But, you know, we're sitting there and we're talking about specifically Blueprint and the challenges for us as a county and the potential price tags, which are astounding, millions and millions of dollars. We're not sure yet, but we think it's going to be in the, a lot of money. And I'm sitting there as a commissioner, but also as a parent, and, you know, you're looking at all these proposals, and what's lost on you, you almost feel like you're sitting in an alternate universe as a parent because you're not seeing anything about metrics, you're not hearing really much, a whole lot about how this blueprint addresses students. You know, there's really not a lot of metrics that go along with it. The Kerwin Commission that people talk about a lot, in my opinion, it hasn't been successful. You look at some of the policy areas that it tried to address years ago, and scores and everything are just down in our state. So when you see the upcoming challenges in terms of the budget and some of the things that Blueprint mandates for the county, I've got a message for, for parents out there. I mean, you can, you can send, please, by all means, come here and speak to us publicly. Send in emails, voices your, voice your concerns. But when your email simply states, "Fund Blueprint," you know, our children are our future, you know, by the way, I get that, my children are my future as well, but just saying, "Fund Blueprint," if you care about schools, fund Blueprint, that is not going to work in the long run. So I would encourage people to look specifically at some of these mandates in Maryland Blueprint and focus on a couple of key issues. The compensatory mandates, in other words, it ties, the compensatory mandates of Blueprint tie up millions of dollars in telling us how we need to spend it. If the state tells us how we have to spend these compensatory funds for certain groups, then we're, our hands are tied for, I think upwards of $30 million. There is a 60-40 teaching split requirement in Maryland Blueprint, which means now teachers, they teach 60% of the time, but the other 40% of the time, they're planning to teach. Right now, it's about a 75-25 split. But what does that 60-40 split mean for our school district? It means we may have to hire over 100 new teachers to fill that void. That's not a good thing. Teaching schools in Maryland, and this is not really, as it relates mostly to Blueprint, but, you know, teaching schools in Maryland are not even going to put out enough teachers to fill these roles in the state. So that's another major concern. And there's also actually another component to Blueprint that requires assistant teacher, assistant principals to teach. So why am I talking about specifics in Blueprint? Well, I'm talking about specifics in Blueprint because we have to educate ourselves as a county, people that are concerned about Maryland Blueprint, just saying, "Fund Maryland Blueprint," you know, if you care about the schools, that's not the issue. And the reason I made some specific comments here is because these are the things we need to probably focus on in terms of Blueprint with our legislation, the upcoming General Assembly, and trying to move the needle on this. There are specifics involved with Blueprint that do not help our county, in my opinion. Maybe Blueprint helps some counties, but the way things look right now and the way it's formatted and the way it's laid out, it doesn't help us, it hurts us. And I just explained a couple of ways that it's going to hurt us. So educate yourselves, folks, particularly parents, make sure you really understand what Blueprint's all about, please reach out to us, give us your comments, but we've got to fine-tune our message here because this is, by all accounts, it's coming. So, thanks.
Absolutely. And, I don't know, did you mention salaries?
I did not.
Huge, so.
Salary increases.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's lots of components to this, and salaries is large, and we're going to be competing across jurisdictions for the same pool of teachers. And, you know, there are already some jurisdictions that are going after teachers with bonuses and salary increases, and, yeah, no, I appreciate it to understand the specifics. Commissioner Gordon.
Thank you. Good morning. Obviously, we all had a wonderful, hopefully, July 4th last Tuesday. You know, we have a tendency to talk about July 4th, but we don't really look at some of the background information of what occurred with the 56 members that, individuals that signed that Declaration of Independence. So I thought I'd just take a minute this morning and kind of give us some background. Might shock some of you. So five of the signers of the 56 were captured by the British as traders and tortured before they died. Twelve had their homes ransacked and burned. Two lost their sons serving in the Revolutionary Army, and another had their two sons captured. Nine of the 56 fought and died from wounds or hardships from the Revolutionary War. They signed their, and they pledged their lives, their fortunes, and their sacred honor. What kind of men were they? Twenty-four of them were lawyers and jurists, 11 were merchants, nine were farmers, men of means, well-educated, but they signed the Declaration of Independence knowing full well that the penalty would be death if they were captured. Carter Braxton of Virginia, wealthy planner and trader, saw his ship swept out to sea by the British Navy when he sold his home, he then sold his home and properties to pay his debts and died in rags. Thomas McKean was so hounded by the British that he was forced to move his family almost constantly. He served in the Congress without pay, and his family was kept in hiding. His possessions were taken from him, and poverty was his reward. Vandals or soldiers looted the properties of Distillery Hall, Clymer, Walton, Gwinnett, Hayward, Ruthledge, and Milton. At the Battle of Yorktown, Thomas Nelson Jr. noted that the British general Cornwallis had taken up the Nelson home, and he quietly urged General Washington to open fire. The house was destroyed, and Nelson died bankrupt. Francis Lewis had his home and properties destroyed. The enemy jailed his wife, and she died within a few months. John Hart was driven from his home while his wife was in her bedside dying. The 13 children fled for their lives. His fields in Grissmo were laid to waste. For more than a year, he lived in the forest and caves, and returning home to find his wife dead and his children vanished. My point for bringing this up this morning, granted, it's a week after the 4th, but I think it's something that's timely on any day, is we need to be very cognitive of what people have done for our country, be it federal, state, or local, when it comes to sacrificing to see that our communities and our country are well taken care of. And I think that in any given day, we should be sure to appreciate the freedoms we have, whether it be our fire EMS, those that have served in our military, or those that have paid significant sacrifices in the foundation of our country. So that's why I bring that up this morning. Moving on, I did want to mention a couple of things going on locally currently, though, in Carroll County. This past week, the Maryland Distillers Guild visited Westminster's Covalent Spirits, where they had a quarterly meeting. Always good to see local business and some of our distillery guilds within the community. On July 17th and 18th, the Carroll County Public Schools and Carroll County Public Library are hosting a mock trial camp for students entering the grades six to nine. Great opportunity for students that have an interest in law. One day, they might be taking Mr. Burke's job, we're not sure.
In their right minds.
Never notes him. And.
Poor guy leaves the room, and he comes back, and that's what he hears.
He should have stayed. But the other thing I do want to mention that's very important coming up, August, the week of August 6th through 12th, is Carroll County Restaurant Week. I would urge everybody to get out, support local business, support the families and the residents that not only own, but also run and work at these businesses, because these are the people that, yes, you may buy a sandwich or a dinner or an entree from them, but they're the people that give back to your community. These are the people that sponsor, you know, rec groups. These are people that sponsor various events in our community, and as always, you know, in Carroll County, it's a very large family when you really think about all of us. And I would just say, if you have the time and the ability, be sure, always, but definitely during Restaurant Week to step out and support local business. Thank you.
Where's that burger coming from?
Depends where you want it. You can go far away.
That thing looked delicious. So, okay. Mr. Kyler.
Thank you. And comments so far have been super, and some of them I'll piggyback, some I'll skip because they've already mentioned, but, yes, carnivals are going on, and our fire companies need our support, and, and I try to get to a few of them. It's, it's hard to get to everything, even things that are a priority. Fourth of July, great time, great time to look back over this country and how blessed we are, some fireworks displays that are fun. Met with the Trans Advisory Council, that was great. Did a cabinet meeting, met with some individual directors, and I just want to use that portion to thank staff and the people in this building and in other county buildings throughout our county. We, one of the things I'm learning as a commissioner, one of the many things, Carroll County, like most governments, we're probably complaint-driven. We don't have people that can watch everything, so we react to complaints, but there's a lot of good things that go on, too, that we don't hear as much about. I've talked to some of the public about our item one on the agenda. Went to the Opioid Prevention Coalition with the Health Department for two hours yesterday, and what a great group. Commissioner Garen covered some of the things with cannabis going on, but they are much concerned about that. Some of the law enforcement people that were there are very concerned about how Annapolis has tied their hands on enforcing problems with it. Yes, 58 or 59% of the county voted that they wanted this. I understand that. I respect that. I think our job is to also care about the safety of the county, and if we upset 58% of the population and we're trying to do what's right, so be it. And, but I want to hear from you, tell, tell me when you're upset, but, but that's, that's a tough thing. We did some Mako meetings, and Commissioner Rothstein will probably talk a little bit more about that. It's a great group, and we have their summer, if you want to call it convention meeting coming up. It's, it's networking with the rest of the, the rest of the counties in the state, jurisdictions in the states. It's just an awesome opportunity. We mentioned the Board of Ed joint meeting yesterday, and it was great. And, of course, my last four years, I, I got to be on the Board of Ed. I made the comment when the Kerwin Commission was meeting, Dr. Kerwin knows more about education than I'll ever learn. I hope he has a good financial advisor because he doesn't know a whole lot about money, and he definitely doesn't know anything about how to implement theories that you, that you draw up. So much, and you still hear it, so much of the hype at the time was helping educators, helping teachers, being more fair to them, increasing their pay. If we don't watch it, we're at a point where the compensatory requirements, some other requirements, are going to make it hard to increase teachers' pay. It's actually hurting that somewhat, it's not helping that. And, and I think we need to look hard at that, and like it or not, we cannot physically fund from a local level what they expect us to do. The Kerwin Commission, the delegation, all said Carroll County does great, and we're in the top 10 or 15% of scores historically. The commissioners, when I was on the other side of the fence, I probably argued with them, but they've treated the school system more fairly than, than a lot of the other 23 jurisdictions. But we get punished for that. And they said Carroll County doesn't need to add a penny to it, the state will fund this. Well, last budget, we doubled what would normally be the, the new money for Board of Ed, and next year, if we can do that again, that's not going to cover a small percentage of what they need. It's, it's just, it's, it's, it's not possible to fund it. We do have a meeting coming up with the State Comptroller and the City of Westminster's also meeting, so that's nice. We've been blessed with people from Annapolis, people from Maryland government getting up here. We've had a number of them get up, and it's awesome. Little commercial, the Buckwild Tractor Truck Pool is at the 4H Fair Friday and Saturday, great event. And, and the 4H people, the Ag Center, there's so many things in this county that are so positive, and we need to support all of them. Our church is currently doing Bible school this week. It's awesome to see these kids playing games and, and learning about Christianity, but playing games and having fun and eating a meal, and so many. The COVID pandemic changed us in some of the things we got to see. Some of the things weren't pretty. We learned stuff about the school system that a lot of parents didn't know, and that's caused a lot of. didn't know, and that's caused a lot of positive changes. But we also learned that there's more people in our county than we think that need help with meals, need help with the food pantries and the stuff that was set up. And I know our Bible school and a lot of them, ours starts with dinner. And the kids are there, some parents are there, and the church invites some of the community to come and get a meal. And we're seeing a good number of people doing that. And that's one of the positive things I think came out of it. Of course, I briefly mentioned a lot of wrestling's going on. Fargo, the national tournament's coming up next week, and freestyle and Greco for the kids. And it's awesome, again, to see the kids doing all that. I'd like to mention something that's probably a touchy subject, but in Carroll County, we've had some great Pride events in the last, well, in June was Pride Month, and then Westminster had an event in July. And that's great. We've been criticized because some related county entities, which I won't name, participated in these. I'll be honest, I applaud their participation in it. I think we need to participate as much as we can in all events. The entities that did participate, I would like to share with you. It's great. And whether we were seeking voters or seeking members for whatever, that's great. But I'll be honest, the New Shiny Penny isn't the only thing going on in Carroll County. I didn't see any of these groups at any of the carnivals. Historically, I don't see any of these groups at the 4-H Fair. And one of the things when there were some complaints, that entity said, well, we want to get out and show ourselves to the community. Well, I hope you mean that. And there's a lot of carnivals that need your help. It's a lot of, you know, the, I'm biased, but with the Ag Center, when you see the cake auction, when you see the livestock auction. Back during COVID, when we were talking about who the heroes were, and a lot of them were, and I told people, I'd go to that livestock auction, and people were hurting financially. And, but they were there, and some girl had a steer, and she was a senior and not going to be back. And they sat there and bid up against each other to benefit her as an outgoing 4-H person, when I'm sure they were cutting corners on a lot of the other things they were doing in their business or their farm. And there's some great people, and they need our support, too. Thank you.
No, absolutely. Before we go on, you mentioned the church and VBS. Chris, you got that picture? Maybe? I always try to take an opportunity to embarrass somebody, and this time, I get to embarrass my son. Okay? Because the VBS, it's across, I think it's across the country, they come up with themes. And this theme has to do with outer space and, you know, obviously teaching the fundamentals of Christianity, but through song and play. And Sam, who is twenty-four, loves to volunteer. I mean, the guy's got degrees and masters and all this, but he is, he's a mountain of a man, and he wore his spacesuit for the kids. So he's enjoying that this week. But I just want to share that. You know, we got just an incredible community. Okay, you can take that off before I get myself into too much trouble.
Congratulations.
So, what's your name? Commissioner Vigliotti. On you.
I hope I remember who I am at this point. Well, good morning, everybody. A lot has already been talked about, so I can briefly go over a couple of things. Obviously, I will always associate myself with Commissioner Guerin's comments and concerns about the legalization of marijuana. And I think it's important to remember that just because something is legal or supported by a majority doesn't make it intrinsically or ontologically right. As Commissioner Gordon and others have also mentioned, last week was obviously Independence Day. And I think that that's important, not just for the celebration of what it means historically, but intrinsically for us as a country. These God-given rights that we have that are protected under the law, and despite the present circumstances that we find ourselves, and I really do believe in my heart that the best days of this country still are ahead. And it's up to us, it's our responsibility to work toward them. I also genuinely believe that the American dream is still alive. And again, that comes down to us ensuring that the American dream does continue to survive. You know, I am proud to be an American, and I always will be. Yesterday, obviously, I joined my fellow commissioners in a joint meeting with the Board of Education. Everybody has capably spoken to the substance of the discussion and the meeting yesterday. So I'll only very briefly say that, you know, it's important that we have these joint meetings with the Board of Education. We're working on having more of them than we have in the past. We're working on more routine communication, because there are a number of these issues, including Blueprint, that are issues that we do have to take on and tackle together. And I am blessed to be working with these gentlemen and the members of the Board of Education and the members of the school system, who recognize that Blueprint is a problem, and it is one that we do have to work together to attempt to contend with. So tomorrow morning, Tawnytown's Chamber of Commerce will be hosting their monthly Business Breakfast at Thunderhead Bow in Tawnytown that begins at seven thirty a.m. The cost of admission is ten dollars. Also tomorrow, from noon to two o'clock, the town of Union Bridge will be hosting a free snow cone event at their square, which is at the corner of Main Street and East Broadway in Union Bridge. And it's events like the Business Breakfast, the snow cone giveaway, the fireworks displays that you have around the county, that help make Carroll the wonderful place that it is and such a vital part of the American heartland. You know, this is a place where the American dream does still survive. And to steal Commissioner Kyler's tagline, because he did not say it this morning, I love Carroll County, and again, I very much love being an American. And that's it for me this morning. Thank you.
Okay, I think I got the short straw. And I put myself in that place by following Commissioner Vigliotti, but, because he still uses very big words that I don't understand, but that's okay.
That's all right. You don't remember my name either, so.
It's a big word. Okay, I mean, Gordine, Kyler, easy. Two syllables. Yours, it keeps going. So earlier this week, I participated on the Shock Trauma Visitation Board. I'm a member of that board. And Shock Trauma, you have tier one, two, and three trauma centers across the country, or, excuse me, across Maryland, and I guess across the country. Shock Trauma is not one, two, or three. They're a level above, and they're designed that way. And just an amazing organization that we have in our state that supports such, you know, challenging times. What happened in Brooklyn, in Baltimore, last week was just horrific. And they received, I think it was about fifteen of those kids that were ages fourteen to twenty-five or something, that were shot up, and two of them had passed. And Dr. Scalia, who runs Shock Trauma, he's irreplaceable. He's like, it's horrible that two had passed, but then again, only two. And it's because they got to Shock Trauma. And the reason Shock Trauma is so special is because they have dedicated staff and dedicated folks for trauma, as opposed to these other trauma centers. They're not as, they're dedicated in the work they do, but they're not dedicated to the trauma itself. It's, sounds like a nuance, but it's really not. And the reason I'm bringing it up as much is, they're going to be continuing to ask for more money to continue to do the work they do. It's not inexpensive by any stretch. And I'm committed to working with our delegation and the state on these efforts, which dovetails right into Mako, Maryland Association Counties. We did have legislative discussions yesterday, and the idea is, there's forty legislative issues that were highlighted. Some are repeats from the year before, but others are new. And it's to pare it down to four or five that the state, counties, jurisdictions want to get behind and either support or ensure that this type of legislation does not go through. So it's a bit of an attack or an offense and a defense. And Mako's been very valued, especially with the defense, that things that we've gone against, about ninety percent have been successful in not getting passed. Two of the issues that I, so one from forty-two, I think now it's down to twenty-six. During the Mako Conference, the intent is to try to get it down to probably around ten. So by the time it gets to January, we got it down to four or five. Two of them definitely are dealing with Blueprint and cannabis. And understanding the authorities that we have in the county, and then the responsibilities we have in the county, the authorities that they have in the state, and the responsibilities. We have specific authorities that, dealing with the zoning of these type of, you know, sales and retail and all that, and that's being worked through. We have a responsibility to ensure our legislators understand and comprehend our opinions on the impact that cannabis can and does have. Because I do believe that the cart is so far in front of the horses on this, that we don't have the laws in place to safeguard our community if we're putting so much more out on the streets of recreational cannabis. I'm not well enough educated, but it just, to me, doesn't make sense that we're doing this as far as allowing this and then developing the laws afterwards to safeguard ourselves. But we do have certain authorities that we are committed to doing, and that does have to do with the zoning piece of where cannabis can be sold right now. It's currently not sold on any county properties. It is marketed recreational cannabis in three, no, three locations and two municipalities. So we really don't have those authorities over them. We have a responsibility, but not necessarily that authority. Blueprint was discussed, and I really appreciate Commissioner Guerin's comments about, the more we understand and learn about the Blueprint and our public education, in its specifics, the better off we're going to be prepared, because we cannot tax ourselves out of this. There is no way. We can't put as much property tax and income tax and recreation tax and everything else and all this. We cannot tax ourselves out of what the requirements look like. So nor should we try. What we should do, and what we are doing, along with you, is understanding the fundamentals of Blueprint and working together with the Board of Education. We did commit ourselves to working with the Board of Education and our delegation on the specifics, and work towards the victories that we can obtain. Because it's going to be, it's going to be very difficult going into this fiscal year, well, we're in the fiscal year, but going into twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. That is about all, except I do need a clock back there, but it's not there anymore. So I don't know what happened. So, because I'm usually looking up and seeing my clock, but it's no longer there. So regardless of all of that, why don't we move on to our first item? And Chris, are you coming up? Is Brenda coming up with you? Okay? And Mr., what's your name? Burke?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. First, to members of our public, just a gentle reminder that under our rules and regulations for the use of the Carroll County Hearing Room, we don't allow signs. The government can't regulate what you say today. Government can't regulate what you wear today. But due to the size of the room, we can regulate signs. Otherwise, this could turn into a battle of the signs, and nobody would have any seats. So please leave your signs at your chair before you come up to speak. And the purpose of today's hearing is to solicit your comment on a proposal that has been advertised in the Carroll County Times on July, June sixteenth and June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. The proposal would remove community solar facilities from the ag zone. We'll give you three minutes each to give your comment on it. And if you wish to comment, please give our deputy county administrator your salmon-colored card. Again, we ask you to limit your comments to three minutes with us today. You're from our Department of Land and Resource Management, the director, Chris Ein, and Brenda Denny is here also from that department, for the purpose of answering any questions you may have on the proposal, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning. So as Mr. Burke indicated, we're here for a public hearing regarding the removal of Section one fifty-eight, one fifty-three E of the county code. Give you a brief history of how we got here to kind of set the stage. So back in two thousand and twenty-one, the then Board of County Commissioners adopted this section, which allowed for community solar on agricultural properties. About a year, it took about a year, and then we started receiving plans for those types of developments. And since that date in April of two thousand and twenty-two, there have been a total of seven projects that have been submitted for the development review process. None of those went, have gone very far in the development review process. Staff has reviewed the proposals, but none of them went to Planning Commission for a concept review. Then in March of this year, this board indicated concerns related to the installation of solar panels on agricultural property. And we went through a process of public hearing and so on to adopt a resolution that passed a six-month moratorium on March ninth related to that, to allow for additional study of the issue. You requested that staff work with a work group, which we assembled, of various individuals here in the county that were both for and against the idea of community solar. That work group met and talked about really two sides of an issue. One, and that was a fundamental question of whether they were, whether community solar was appropriate for ag at all. So on the one side, there was the opinion that, no, it's not at all. And then on the other side of the opinion was, okay, yes, it may be appropriate, but then what kind of qualifications are required? And so we spent a fair amount of time working with citizens in that work group, discussing that second half of it. If there was, if it was acceptable to move forward, what kind of qualifications and so on would need to be put in place, right? So we then had a work session with the board and presented that, the staff report that came out of that work session. And the board voted to pursue the idea of removing, or the concept of removing, this section of code. As per the county code, because this is a land use change, a land use ordinance change, it had to be referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review and comments. So the vote back in May was to take that concept of removal of the ordinance to Planning and Zoning Commission. We presented that as an introduction on June seventh to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then we've had further conversations on June twentieth. And the Planning and Zoning Commission voted and agreed with you that removal of the section of code was appropriate. And we have forwarded that letter to you all, and you should have that in your record. So at this point, following the process for ordinance change, we're here for the public hearing related to a resolution to remove this section of code. Following the public hearing, when you close the public hearing, and Mr. Burke, correct me if I misspeak, I believe you can either leave the record open for ten days to accept further comments, or you can take action if you so desire after you've closed it today. And so we can bring this, this process to a conclusion today.
And understanding if we take action, that it still has to be the ten days before it's enacted.
No, you can vote to adopt the ordinance today. It cannot be effective until July the twenty-third. So that's the way the ordinance will be written.
Tried to say the same thing. Got it.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for either Brenda or myself before we proceed?
Not just, I'm sorry, Commissioner, please. I was just going to say thank you for all of the work that you guys have put into this. Thank you to everybody in the, in staff, and thank you to everybody who participated in that work group. I know it was a somewhat contentious issue at certain times, although decorum was good, people were polite, but the issue itself was certainly in contention. And I appreciate and respect the amount of time and effort that you put into this. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just a couple of-
Just a couple of quick questions. The, the seven total as of March twenty-twenty-three, you said that no action had been taken by any of them. Was that from, did they, did they have ample time from when they started to ask to doing this or making a request to go in through plans? I mean...
So the development review process has, it's a, it's a long process that goes through multiple steps. The initial steps are, the, a plan is submitted, a concept plan is submitted. That plan gets reviewed by all the technical agencies at county staff level.
Right.
And we have what's called a technical review committee meeting, where we discuss with the developer and the property owner any technical issues. Several of these projects did have a technical review committee meeting. Then the developer addresses all of the technical questions and when, regarding their concept. When that is complete, they then present to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a concept review, which is at the point that the Planning and Zoning Commission can put additional qualifications, ask questions of the developer, and so on before they proceed. None of these projects reach the point of all technical questions being addressed and going to Planning and Zoning Commission for that concept review.
That's what I thought. Okay. And they were given ample time to get there?
Oh, yes. Yes.
Okay. I don't see the planning boards' recommendation except for your slide. Was there, was it unanimous across the planning board, do you remember?
I do not remember the vote off the top of my head. But I can, we can certainly get that information for you, but I don't remember if it was unanimous or not. I remember that one commission member did abstain because he was part of the work group that, that we had assembled, so he abstained from the vote.
Right. So we had, all were in favor, the who voted. One person recused themselves because he had been on the work group, and another person abstained because he had just joined the planning commission.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any, any questions?
Yes, and kind of just to clarify, March ninth, we adopted the moratorium. Prior to that, we had a motion and agreed to pursue this, but we had to wait by law a certain amount of time to be able to vote. We had to do a public advertisement?
Yeah.
Yes, and wait. And, and, and when I'm wrong, holler. At that time that we initially voted, there were only five projects submitted. Two came in between the time that the moratorium was adopted and we discussed it in public. And when we did that discussion prior to March ninth, and even March ninth, the existing zoning ordinance was less than two years old.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was right on, on that stuff.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing here none, I'd like to move on to a public comment. As a gentle reminder, keeping your comments direct, it's not a question-answer period. Please, when you get to the microphone, share with us your name and address. We will keep this to three minutes. You do not have to use the entire three minutes, but I will do my very best to keeping it and not going past the three minutes per speaker, since we do have a large audience. Chris, is there anyone on the phone?
Yes, sir. We have one caller. Caller, if you could use star six to unmute, you'll have three minutes to make your comment. Please identify yourself and give us the area you're calling from. You may begin.
Good morning. My name is Barbara Willett from Willett's Viewed Community Solar Project, Sunshine Acres LLC. First, I want to appreciate and thank the citizen shareholders who participated in the work group, as well as the county staff that were involved. Posing many questions today that I hope will be answered in the future. But please remember, community solar offers an alternative to small farms to not only keep their land, but also provide a service to their community and follow state mandates for renewable clean energy for those who wish to take advantage of it. But this aspect continues to be ignored. Also downplayed is the fact that community solar would add to the county's ag preservation goal at no cost to the county and to tax payers millions of dollars. Interesting today that you have some of that being voted on that will cost taxpayers money. Why has the request for existing community solar projects to be grandfathered in been ignored? Commissioners keep saying, we want to get this right, yet all we and the many other farmers did was follow laws that were already in place, and they had to shut us down because someone's view was obstructed. After more than a year of planning permits, changing contracts with farmers, the board stopped it midstream. There was just conversation about, was there enough time for zoning? Our zoning review had been stopped because of the mandate, and I believe that's true for others as well. So time was an issue with getting things approved because everything has been stopped. So how is this getting it right? Those who have a million-dollar view of a farm at no expense to them should buy their own farm and learn how difficult it is to survive as a small farmer here in this county. You state you were not against solar, just against ag land solar. We know this is a community solar-only emphasis, but will these same concerns for solar be addressed regarding all current and future solar projects? Even though they are in approved zone areas, which we were working towards, why wouldn't they have the same rules apply? Questions about inactive development, decommissioning, impacting views should apply to all solar development in the county, would it not? If it's not safe or visually pleasing on ag land, why is it okay on the county, at the college, at the high schools, in Unionburg, on private industry, on the roof of industry, even though zoned and allowed, it can easily be seen from our roadways? But why is it different for farmers? What is going to be done in the future to support landowners like our five-generation farming families who would like to continue to live, work, and own a farm in Carroll County that doesn't fall to ruin like so many you see around the county now? Again, we thank all who participated in the work group for their time. Now it's time for the commissioners to do the right thing and allow community solar on ag land so farms in Carroll County...
Thank you very much.
...provide, offer renewable clean energy to the community to all...
Thank you, ma'am.
...that we love and call for farm for solar. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Chris, is there anyone else on the, on the phone?
Yes, sir. That's the only caller.
Okay, thanks. Deb, do you want to take the lead?
Yes, the first person is Mark Hamilton.
What an honor to be chosen. I'm never, never number one. I wanted to thank all the Commissioners here in person today who voted in majority to enact a six-month solar moratorium back on March ninth. Then again, March eighteenth moving forward with another majority vote, motion to propose removal of community solar facilities in the agricultural zones of the county. I also want to thank you all for allowing myself and many others to speak and comment many times and exceed our three-minute time limit during several of these meetings, so we could all express our thoughts and explain in our own words entirely how this poorly planned and written past one fifty-eight, one fifty-three E text amendment negatively affected each and every one of us. I'm sure you remember me personally addressing my comments and concerns repeatedly during all these meetings, how the amendment was hurriedly passed through and approved in May of two thousand twenty-one, with having only a simple minimum set property setback of forty foot inside the proposed site property line, while having no set regulations thawed out or written in regards to the close proximity placement that this would allow solar generate, generating facilities to be planned and built in relation to existing residential neighborhoods, their public roadways, adjacent residential dwellings, and their residential property line boundaries. As a result of your considerations, your endless efforts, and your much appreciated, sensible, thought-out decisions, this action will stop a fifteen-to-seventeen acre community solar energy generating system named Chaberton Sunshine Solar Project from being approved and built across the road from me and my neighbors with sixty-five hundred solar panels directly facing my house, only a hundred and thirty-five foot from my frontal property line, and two hundred and fifty foot, two feet from the front door of my existing forty-year-old residential zone home along Fannie Dorsey Road in Sykesville. While during this time, everyone else who is also in close proximity to this project, as well as many other citizens residing near other planned community solar project locations throughout the county, have also made you aware of their own articles of conflict in each of these, their own districts. Being a thirty-eight-year, thirty-eight-year resident of the county and retired higher county and government employee after forty years' service, it's been a pleasure to have met you and been involved in working with you all this time, getting to know you all on a first-name basis, after I've never met any other former Commissioners in my thirty-eight years' resident of the county. I sincerely hope and believe that today you'll follow through again and hand down another majority vote to finalize our common goal of permanently abolishing text amendment one fifty-eight, one fifty-three E from the solar, community solar zoning code, and not allow community solar to be put on prime agricultural Carroll County land.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna get ready in my comments. I'll end my comments after one more by saying that I leave this meeting today. I will be going downstairs to pay my fiscal year two thousand twenty-four property tax bill in for another full year with the pleasure and comfort of knowing that you as our Commissioners will always care about us and will realize what a great place Carroll County is to reside, and especially knowing that you are keeping a watchful eye over us, our families, and our rightful interests every single day. Thank you again, Commissioners.
Okay, next.
Kelly Buchanan.
I expect all of you are going to be paying your property taxes, so. Just saying.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment today. My name is Kelly Buchanan, and I think I might be the only solar developer in the room who made the time and effort to come down here to Carroll County. I work for Lightstar Renewables, and we are a community solar developer with about six hundred megawatts in our portfolio across the United States. But Lightstar is different. We have a focus on agrivoltaics, which, as you might be aware, recently passed and became a part of Maryland's state statute in the form of definition. And in short, agrivoltaics is a simultaneous use of a single parcel of land for both solar and agricultural production. For Lightstar, that sets a high bar. We focus on agrivoltaics that either produces market or commodity crops, and some of our projects are even planning to get a combine into these panels and use that land to be productive. For us, agrivoltaics provides several benefits to communities, the first of which, in my mind, is the benefit to farming families. Agrivoltaics adds in a financial viability tool to a farmer's toolkit that can ensure that they have a plan for retirement, that they can keep the land in the family, and that they can even encourage their younger generations to stick around and be a part of the farming culture. I think it's important for the Commissioners here today to see that the development pressure in Carroll County is certainly a problem, and I think agrivoltaics can be a part of the solution in that struggle. Agrivoltaics also provides locally-produced energy to the community and can provide bill savings to customers here in Carroll County. And with agrivoltaics, you get the added benefit of locally-produced food. These are all important to us, and we make sure that these projects are developed responsibly by utilizing our partnership with the American Farmland Trust and their smart solar principles, as well as working with both the state and local chapters of farm bureaus. We hope that this provides Carroll County with an opportunity to consider the option of allowing agrivoltaics on agriculturally-zoned land in the county, and we're eager and excited to work with you to share the information and knowledge that we have in this emerging industry. With that, I would also like to mention that the work that happened within the community solar working group is really important, and I think some of the metrics around, you know, especially setbacks and screening are important for this board to consider, should you consider agrivoltaics. There's always room for improvement in the community solar industry, and, you know, Lightstar has experience working across a variety of different states. We have agrivoltaic projects in New York, New Jersey, Massachusetts, and Illinois, and we have experience working with counties like Carroll. I would be glad to be a resource to this board and a resource to the community to bring information forward regarding the opportunity for agrivoltaics, and I would be happy to take any questions, but thank you so much for your time this morning.
Thank you very much.
Jason Meyer.
I'm Jason Myers, New Windsor, Maryland, and this morning I'm representing Carroll County Farm Bureau. Just, our board has strongly been against this ordinance. The, we feel like the change of this ordinance makes it more consistent with the zoning in the county and also with our tremendous commitment to ag preservation in this county. And I just want to share with you that the farmers that farm this county are very committed to agriculture, and I think our voice as far as being against this ordinance certainly coincides with that. I do want to thank the Commissioners and the previous Commissioners as well for letting us be a part of the process, even though we didn't agree with the ordinance when it was formed. I think I need to share that those Commissioners allowed us to meet with staff to discuss it, and we came up with our decision after we met with staff, and they were very upfront about it previous to the original ordinance. And we also want to thank the current group for rehearing this and realizing that we do sometimes have to change our opinions, and, but we do, as an organization, really appreciate being a part of the process, as well as having representation on the review committee that you had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl Bossy.
Cheryl Bossy, four-one-four-eight Nora Drive, Hinksburg. I enjoyed listening to Commissioner Vigliotti's podcast this week, and again, to Commissioner Gordon this morning. Both of them talked about Independence Day, our country and our founding fathers, how they weren't perfect, but how they still accomplished great things for the good of the people, how it's pretty much the same with our country. It isn't without its problems, but fundamentally, we are still the best and accomplish great things to preserve our freedom and independence. I can't help see this issue and this process as a microcosm of our democracy, representative of our freedom and independence. Although our county is not without its problems, and not all of our leaders have the same opinions, I want to say I'm proud to have had a voice in this issue, and I'm proud of those of you who have made the right choice for the people of Carroll County. What is the future of solar fields on farmland across the state and country? Only time will tell, but as a citizen of Carroll County, I can breathe a sigh of relief and be proud, knowing that our county has vowed to protect our farmland and be leaders, not followers, for the greater good of the people. No farmland, no food. Thank you.
Thank you.
Teri Smack.
Good morning, Teri Smack, three-seven-seven-five Aaron Jacob Drive, Tony Town, Maryland. I want to thank everyone from the bottom of my heart, from the people who dedicated their time to spend to investigate what needs to be done with this ordinance. I do want to say, you know, I've stood here downstairs three or four times and said the same thing over and over again, but something just struck me from the caller that called in and said that it was at no cost to the county. I'm in business, so I know a little bit about business, and to have a bond that would be able to clean up the mess after twenty, twenty-five, or thirty years, a two-million-dollar bond would be nothing. And then, if the county, they're all LLCs, what happens when the LLCs dissolve? It's going to end up on the county. And you're talking about... It's going to end up on the county, and you're talking about what's going to happen with the marijuana, things like that. Well, this is the same thing. The same item, it's going to be that the county is going to pick up and they're going to take over the expense. And who's going to pay for that? The members of the community when we're paying our taxes downstairs. That's who's going to pay for it. So I appreciate your time, everyone who, again, that did participate from one portion to another, and I hope that you gentlemen will vote against 158, 153E, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jack Hayden.
I have two things, two topics. The first one is pertinent to the solar, of course. You know, I have to admit, I was sitting on my porch this morning looking out and on the cornfield and the pasture next door and glad to see the deer roaming out there and, you know, that's why we all moved to Carroll County. Carroll County is an agricultural county and we do fervently protect it, and that's a good thing, particularly in light of all these world issues. We need to have our own food here instead of relying on the rest of the world. But anyway, appreciate it that I'm not looking at a quagmire of whatever, metal racking and solar bars, you know. Solar is a great thing. I like it on houses, I like it on buildings. I think it goes in industrial, there's a lot of areas. I was very disappointed in the committee that was formed that all they tried to do is, it appeared, was promote and protect the ordinance that had been written instead of trying to figure out a way to really promote solar in Carroll County. We need solar in Carroll County, and I think we need to look for ways to do it better. I think the other one was, was a poor choice to have a segmented solar system all over the county in little groups rather than, you know, larger appropriate solar farms in hidden places or wherever. But anyway, I'm glad you guys have handled this issue the way you have, and that's the second part of my comment is, is the commission, this board of commissioners, you know, I want to thank you, everything you said, everything you all said when you opened this meeting, all the topics you touched on, you guys are leaders in the right way, and I can assure you that council meetings downtown and in other areas around Maryland do not discuss things that you're discussing. In fact, they discuss the exact opposite. You guys are great Americans and I think you're great leaders, and I just hope you can control, you know, all the people that work underneath of you and for the county. Strong leadership, strong leadership comes from the top, and people follow you. I'm a business owner too, and, you know, the buck stops there, and they follow their leaders. So I'm so proud to live in Carroll County and so proud of what you guys have done and on all the topics that you talked about. So please, continue to do it, and I thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Annette Fleischel.
My name is Annette Fleischel. I pretty much know everybody in this room, and you've heard me a lot of times, but this is the last time. I live at 1401 Fannie Dorsey Road. I own a 50 acre farm which is directly across the first community solar energy generating system that was proposed, and that was on May 23rd, 2022, that we went to the first TRC meeting. A lot of time has passed since then. It's the beginning of my 15 month battle to stop the permitting of solar panels on our valuable and productive agricultural land, and it's finally coming to an end, but not before another facility was planned 0.6 miles down the road from me, joined by six more by the end of 2022. I'm speaking not just for myself, but for the greater majority of Carroll County who object to solar on agricultural lands, not solar per se, on agricultural lands. We have been to every commissioner meeting, town meeting, community meeting, solar meeting, and we talked with emotion, and we talked loudly about how solar panels do not belong on Carroll County ag land. We have researched solar energy, we have sent numerous articles and documents to the commissioners for their educational review, and we had petitions signed in our communities. Residents are against solar panels on ag land in our neighborhoods and communities. Why? Because most people who moved to Carroll County and who still live in Carroll County because of its rich history in farming, open spaces, small communities, not for its industry, commercial space, or solar energy generating systems which are invading the land. Solar panel systems are industrial in nature, and that is where they rightfully belong. First and foremost, my message today is to recognize the four county commissioners, Mike, Joe, Ken, and Tom, who are here before us today, that are, who listen to us, who listen to all their constituents, who spoke with the residents, and who believed that our commitment to keeping agricultural viable and thriving could not exist without the complete removal of the troublesome and poorly written county code 158, 153. Thank you from the bottom of my heart and from the 99% of the county residents who believe in you too. I was asked to participate in a work group created by the Land and Resource Development, and thank you Chris and Diane for your, I mean Brenda, for your, for your time and energy. We spent four six hour days discussing the pros and cons of developing community solar on ag land. It was obvious during these discussions that the differences between the landowners and the, and the energy companies and the residents and farmers were unrecognizable. There could be no overall compromise or revisions to the code.
Please finish your thoughts.
Okay, all right. Thank you again to the county commissioners for all you have done. Let's just remember a few things. No farms, no food. Solar is industrial. There can be no grandfathering of projects and no further projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Patricia Toth.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Patricia Toth. I live at 6565 Gisanna Court. My husband Lou and I own the property on Fannie Dorsey Road with the proposed project, Sunshine Project. I participated in the work group on community solar. I'd like to thank both Chris and Brenda and my fellow participants who are in the room today, Annette, Cheryl, and the gentleman from the farm bureau. They were contentious meetings, and as Annette mentioned, we put in some long days, not just in the meetings themselves, but with follow up suggestions during the time in between the meetings. We really tried to address the problems with the current text amendment, and I believe there is room for compromise. I believe that you would be able to take the current text amendment and satisfy the landowners, the project developers, and the neighbors to these existing projects. However, my take is, is that many of you commissioners dismissed our efforts and recommendations with little consideration. I did attend the meeting where Chris presented our report, and it was obvious to me that little consideration was given to our efforts. I'm not going to take up your time this morning rehashing my former verbal and written comments. I think few of the comments you'll hear this morning will be anything new or offer any fresh perspectives, but I do want to say this. You as the commissioners had a chance to provide leadership to the county, and I think you are not providing the service you were elected to perform. Simply wiping the community solar text amendment from the zoning code does not serve the long term needs of the people of Carroll County or address the renewable requirements from the state of Maryland, which Carroll County will have to face in the future. You had the chance to govern, to lead, and to reach compromise among neighbors, property owners, and solar developers, and it's disappointing to me that the board of commissioners did not follow the lead of the citizens and county staff and build consensus on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sally Taylor.
Hi, Sally Taylor, Eldersburg. My property is not affected by any of the solar projects that have currently been proposed, but I wanted to add my voice to those encouraging the board's decision to eliminate the community solar program use on farmland before these small solar projects dot Carroll County. There are too many questions regarding the decommissioning and the promise of returning the land back to farm use, which remain. Protecting Carroll's main economic engine, agriculture, should be our top priority. While I'm sympathetic to the argument of private property rights, for decades collectively we've agreed to limit our planning, these rights to our planning and zoning regulations. In exchange for land zone agriculture, landowners have greatly reduced tax burdens, and those who have located their homes paying a great deal more in property tax have had the assurance that these areas would be limited to specific use, mostly related to agriculture. None of these homeowners envisioned that they would be overlooking an industrial site. View scape is an important factor, not only in the enjoyment of one property, but in its property value. For many of our home, for many, our homes are our greatest asset. Unfortunately, the days of large tracts of land in Carroll County similar to the Wild West where structures could be built not affecting neighboring properties are long gone, and we need zoning regulations to protect all property owners. Thank you.
Sandy Roberts.
Thanks. Good morning. My name is Sandy Roberts, 6571 Gisanna Court. A big thank you to the four commissioners who voted to put an end to solar, industrial solar on agricultural land. We appreciate that more than you know. Unfortunately, in America, it's become common practice for politicians to make political decisions that benefit wealthy companies and lobbyists, and we applaud you for not going down that road and for instead taking in the majority of the Carroll County residents' feelings and opinions on this issue in that way. And as Cheryl said earlier, I will have to reiterate that I also feel like this is a great example of democracy at its finest and progress in our county. In terms of the first caller who called in, I just have to point out that it's been put out there that this needed to be, industrial solar needed to be put on agricultural land so that farmers can save their farms. And I want to point out that many of the projects that had been proposed for solar in this county are not owned by farmers. They're owned by people who bought farmland for investment property purposes. They're not farming that land. It is being farmed by local Carroll County farmers, but they're not trying to save their farms by putting industrial solar on it and by bringing income in that way to save a farm per se. There's been lots of talk about the state mandating solar and what are we going to do about that? They're going to tell us where to put solar and this, that, and the other. I want to point out that there's a solar product, excuse me, a solar project called Summit Ridge Energy Bomber Project in Hampstead, Maryland, in Carroll County. It is the nation's largest rooftop community solar array, and it provides 1,300 Maryland homes and businesses with solar energy. Yes, we are doing our part. That's, that's a step that Carroll County is taking to do its part, and no, we are not against solar, all of these people who are speaking out. We are projecting that solar be put on government building rooftops, airport rooftops, school rooftops, which other counties are doing, parking lots, there are industrial areas, commercial areas, there are so many other ways that Carroll County can meet the quota for solar energy that the state is going to be mandating. And then my final point is just, there was this terrible hailstorm in Nebraska last week or two weeks ago that completely destroyed a solar farm, and I read an article that stated that those solar panels are going to end up in the landfill because they are, only 10% of solar panels are recycled because of the cost to recycle them. So do we want our landfills around the county and the country to be filled with solar panels?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, all of you, and everyone who participated and spent their time.
Thank you.
Brian Boilow.
Hi, I'm Brian Boilow, 16th Fannie Dorsey Road, and I took off work today to be here to support my neighbors that are on Fannie Dorsey Road, that are on Gisanna Court. I love that quarter, very beautiful houses. I don't like the idea of agriculture land being used for solar panels. There's not enough historic, what do you do at the end of 20 years when they're done? Their lifespan. California is having a problem right now with how to dispose of their solar panels. Love the rooftop idea. Why not put it on Walmart? Why not put it on all industrial roofs? A roof is usually done or need a replacement in 20 years, 30 years. That's the time when the solar panels can, are done, so you can replace the solar panels at that time with replacing the roof. The wildlife, the migration of wildlife, well, you're enclosing that solar panel field with a fence. How does wildlife migrate through that? And what do the geese do? When we protect the geese, but their field that they usually land on is no longer there, it's just a, it's just a solar panel metal thing. I'm interested in the commercial person of what she was saying of running a combine through a solar panel field. Love to see that on video, but the droppings from the solar panels, the metal, the, whatever they're made out of, does it, is it toxic to the soil that you're growing your fruits and vegetables from, your grain? I'm not prepared to really talk about this, but I just see that I'm a big no to agriculture's putting metal on agricultural land. I want to feed the world. We have a lot of hunger in the world, and Carroll County can help with that with producing food, not producing solar panels that end in 20 years. And then when you're done with 20 years, you can't renew that farmland, it's done. You've, you scraped up all the topsoil, the topsoil is gone, you just filled it with gravel and machines or what have you. That's going to be tossed back into the landfill. All the solar panels are mostly coming from China. We're not supporting our US manufacturing. We killed that. We had a manufacturing plant in Frederick, but they shipped it off to China, I believe. So I'm just a no to it. Everything that Annette said, I agree with and I support that.
Okay, thank you. And sure, you did fine. Thank you.
Frasier Bishop.
My name's Frasier Bishop. I live off Deer Park Road in Finksburg. It's my understanding, or I have to assume, that people that own these farmlands either bought the farmlands or inherited the farmlands, and at the time they bought or inherited them, they were zoned agricultural. So they knew what they were getting when they acquired them through whatever means. I think some of these people have found that it's a quick way to make a quick dollar to go to solar. They don't have to manage the farms. They get somebody else to do it for 20 years. All they got to do is go to the mailbox and get mailbox money. But that's not what these farms were designed for originally, and that hasn't been their main purpose. That's number one. Number two, I live across from one of the proposed solar farms, and let me back up a second. I do a fair amount of work in Baltimore City, and my wife has assured me that we will never live in the city. If I want to live in the city, I can live in the city, but we will never live in the city. So taking that, you know, the city's moving out to us, and she doesn't want to live in the city or an industrial area, and I don't want to live in the city or an industrial area. So I am opposed to the solar farms, and I don't think that the people that have these farms didn't know what they were getting involved in when they acquired the farms. So I think now that they have the farm, maybe they need to put more energy into figuring out a good way to make them more production or a way of making more money rather than just saying, hey, I'll just go to the mailbox. just saying, hey, I'll just go to the mailbox and collect my check. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the last one I have is Gary Wishar.
Good morning, Commissioners. Gary Wishar, six five six nine, Justina Court, Seixville, Maryland. I stand before you once again petitioning your continued support of the denial of industrial solar projects on ag land in Carroll County. As a resident directly impacted by a proposed industrial solar project adjoining my property, my petition is even stronger where my home will have direct sight and would be directly impacted by these unsightly solar panels diminishing my property value, which is my retirement notwithstanding environmental concerns. I am a part of numerous email groups strongly opposed to these horrendous industrial solar projects. These projects do not represent the majesty of Carroll County and members of these email groups. The passion of these groups opposed to these industrial solar projects is incredible. I'm confident you have heard the passion via emails, letters, phone calls. Additionally, I have a petition signed by 74 residents near Fanny Dorsey Road and the proposed industrial solar project who vehemently oppose this solar landfill in our quiet and peaceful community. Finally, the four commissioners who, a few weeks back, voted to kill these industrial projects, including Commissioner Gordon's comments where he demanded that all projects grandfathered, which were in various stages of development in Carroll County, also be killed. You four, your leadership and concentrated effort to do the right thing for Carroll County to kill these community, community industrial solar landfill projects on ag land have affectionately been known and coined as the fabulous Fab Four. Commissioners Gurren, Gordon, Kyler, and Vigliotti, you're heroes to so many in Carroll County, and I commend your leadership in our county. Finally, I commend the Fab Four and urge the newest superheroes of Carroll County, kill this resolution once and for all of these industrial solar projects on ag property and maintain the county and the quiet and peaceful residential communities we have grown to embrace and to love. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Deb?
That was it.
Well, the Beatles just served us with a notice of copyright infringement.
So, Chris, Chris, is there anyone else on the phone?
No, sir.
Okay, and there's no one else here. I need a motion to bring this public hearing to a close.
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion, guys, second and discussion on that. Seen here, none all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, as shared, Chris, um, we have a couple of options. Uh, one is to leave the record open for 10 calendar days prior to a vote to be scheduled later. We can, uh, take an option to vote today in making a decision and having an effective date of July 23rd or 27th?
Ten days.
Ten days. So, July 23rd. As we do this, what I'd like, you know, this is an important one. And I think it would be appropriate to, not as sometimes we do, and that's going through a motion, a second, seen here, none all in favor, and make it done, but get a motion and a second and give the opportunity for each of us to make appropriate comments and then give your up or down at that point. Okay? That's, okay. So, is there a motion that wants to be put out there right now?
Motion to, wait. So, do you want to talk about the option first or do you want to talk about the motion?
Motion.
No, I need, I need a motion.
Okay, motion to remove, uh, hold on, chapter 158.153 from the agricultural zoning.
If I could clarify, I'm sorry, Commissioner. Subsection E.
Subsection E.
Yes, we don't want to remove the entire.
Yeah. Subsection E, I apologize.
Thank you.
Okay, so, say it, that's all right. Say it one more time.
Motion to remove section 153.158 subsection E, what?
158.
Oh, my goodness.
Section 158 dot 153 subsection E.
Is that a motion, Commissioner?
Go for it.
All right, I'm gonna try this one more time.
Okay.
Motion to remove section 158.153 subsection E from the county code.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second now. I have a motion and a second. Time for discussion, and at time of the discussion, um, I think we will get a sense and then we'll take a vote, so, uh, if you want to make comments. If you don't, that, that's up to you. Commissioner Gurren?
Let's do this. That's it.
Commissioner Corrigan?
I'm gonna be a little lengthier than that. No disrespect to Commissioner Gurren, but, um, first and foremost, I want to thank everybody in the room, uh, both staff also that are not here, but anyone that was involved in this process on both sides of the issue. I know sometimes people want to take the opinion that, and I won't speak for my colleagues, and I'm quite sure I could on this, but I don't want to. I don't come into anything predisposed. I don't have an opinion. I know that might sound shocking to some of you, but I leave my opinions at the door. When I look at a matter like this or any other topic that comes before us, I listen to you, the community, whether it's emails, phone calls, visits, uh, a variety of different ways we communicate, but I actually listen to all of you. I take all of that into context. Um, and I think it's very important that we do that. I just want to put that out there this morning because, you know, I don't just sit up here and make a decision based on what I think. I listen to all of you, and I think it's important that you all know that. I think also, for me, looking at all this, this comes down to zoning. It's not just about farming. It's not about a view of what my neighbor looks at or doesn't look at. It comes down to zoning. It's an industrial use on ag. Ag's one of the crown jewels of our county. We are one of the top agricultural states, if not counties, excuse me, counties in the nation. And to me, that says a lot about our county. We had Secretary of, uh, Ag, Kevin Addicks, a number of months up here, and, uh, a number of months ago, he was up here and visited, and one of the conversation, during the conversation, one of the questions was asked, what are your thoughts on solar on ag? And Secretary Addicks was very to the point that ag should be used for food and other agricultural usage. And I would agree with him irregardless of him saying that or someone else saying that. Number of years ago, in 2019, I wrote an article in the Carroll County Times. Some might remember, I used to do some opinion columns, and it was called Know Your Farmer, Know Your Food. And we struggle worldwide when it comes to our food. We constantly hear about issues where, you know, buying dog food that came from China was poisoning dogs or other, other things. And I think the one thing that makes us very unique is typically we can go around this county and buy food from each other, and we know it's safe. And I think that's a priority, and I think it's something that makes us exceptional when it comes to who this county is and what we want to be. And I do appreciate everyone coming out today, and I appreciate everyone that's come out previously on this matter, and I just want to say thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. I'm not gonna put myself in the same position, so Commissioner Vigliotti, you're next.
So, I, I have written a few things down. This will not be a 20-minute disquisition like last time, I promise.
I don't even know what disquisition is, so go ahead.
An elaborated statement on an issue.
Keep going.
So, I know that I and my fellow commissioners have explained more than once that the question about solar power isn't a question of solar itself, but where and how it goes. When it comes to solar use of residential rooftops or solar developments in commercial and industrially zoned areas, the use makes sense. But when we are speaking of altering the agricultural zones of our county, we are not just talking about changing the use of the land, we're talking about changing the nature of the county. To be sure, we are not speaking of stopping some long-established centuries-old practice in solar development, but rather protecting one in agriculture. Our county has always been agrarian in nature, beginning with its founding where natural, longstanding practices became an inseparable part of our existence. Even today, agriculture remains the premier component of our county's economy, society, and culture. Conversely, the idea of solar development of agricultural land is new to our county, so new in fact that when the moratorium went into effect, no potential development had gone through the entire planning and zoning process, let alone that none had received approval. In considering zoning in the county code, one finds that untagged vehicles, junk buildup in yards, regulations for burning and bonfires, and the conditions under which animals are to be slaughtered for food are just a few examples of the things which the county restricts or prohibits. This is a part of ordered liberty, of ensuring that my freedom does not infringe upon yours. In the case of solar development, it involved any number of citizens in our county community and their rights. With sympathy to both sides of the issue, I had wondered originally through this process whether there might currently be some middle way forward. The most compelling argument for me was the co-locating of solar and farming. We've dedicated a part of the county government's efforts specifically to agricultural preservation, and since the agricultural preservation's program's introduction, we've overseen the investment of a quarter of a billion dollars into preserving farmland as a measure of sustaining Carroll's agrarian heritage and securing the way for future generations. But as I discovered, even in instances where agrivoltaics is proposed, the simultaneous dual use of farmland for solar and agriculture, outstanding environmental and economic concerns offer room for pause. And there are still enough other questions at present, only some partially answerable at best, such as zoning classification, lease terms, lengths and renewals, and the scope and extent of solar development, which lend themselves to the heart of all questions, does this fit? As I've argued before, just because something goes doesn't mean it fits. In other words, is what is being proposed wholly consistent with the place and at home among the people who live there? Is it compatible, complementary, or confirming of a community, society, culture, and the landscape itself? Is it home? Taking all of these things together as they stand, I must answer no, that the solar development of agricultural land does not. If we are serious about agricultural preservation as we say we are, then it is agricultural use to which we must dedicate our zoning. And that's it from me. Thank you.
You follow that?
Okay, yes. Not quite as organized, but I, I have some comments. And I'm not sure if order is important, but, um, I, I think the first thing I want to mention before I, I go into some of my feelings on this, um, it's, it's great that, um, we, we heard some compliments today. I don't know that we're heroes, but, um, unfortunately, the ones that disagree with our decision, uh, um, I've gotten emails, they're extremely disappointed in me, which, you know, join the crowd. But I want to challenge those of you in the room, those of you who have been involved in that, in this, and I want to challenge us. I think Carroll County, and, and a couple of you mentioned it, we've been active with solar. Solar's important moving forward. I'm, I don't think we ought to disband fossil fuels next week and go all electric and et cetera, et cetera, but we need to protect our planet and we need to move forward with solar. I, I, somebody mentioned this is the last time you'll hear from us, and in a way, I guess we should say, yeah, thanks, we don't need to spend hours in here, but we do. I, I challenge you guys to keep the focus on what is the appropriate place for solar? Where should we have it? And it's not just rooftops. Um, and, and then back to, back to me, I was opposed to this in May of 2021 and the prior discussions to it, and I spoke out about it. One of the things I was opposed to was the use of ag remainders. By nature, they are near-residential. I heard the past commissioners make the comment on some other zoning issues. Well, this farmer's already done his development rights, and he now has an ag remainder, does he deserve another bite of the apple? Well, I think the farmer does, but I think, um, I'd feel differently about this if, if, uh, this rule were 40 or 50 years old. It's not. It was less than two when we started this. And, and, uh, I just thought it was inappropriate, and, uh, and yes, I did bring my opinion here because that was my opinion then, and nobody's convinced me otherwise. There's been, and I think we need to emphasize because we are solar friendly, there's been no delay on any other solar projects, only the ones on ag remainder. And when we first brought up the motion, there were only five submitted. One of the ones that's adamant about that we should consider grandfathering wasn't even submitted at that point in time. They were submitted in the window that the law required us to wait, which I understand. I mean, that was their opportunity. But when we had a work group, we had staff, and both sides have kind of said, we didn't come to agreements. So if we have an ordinance and we're not sure we can agree on how it ought to be implemented, that's not the time to grandfather someone in. And I, I feel for the projects. I, I've been involved in development most of my life, and, uh, trust me, uh, I've been further along with projects much longer, much larger than a 20-acre solar field and had to walk. And it, it's unfortunate, but, um, and, and I, and I feel for the people. The other point I'd like to make is, and, and somebody made it here, most of the ag remainders we're talking about aren't farmers. They're developers who have bought an ag remainder, and more power to them, that's an opportunity, you know, they wanted to pursue. The, the other side of it I've heard is some of these people are five-generation farmers. I've got a very small, tiny farm that I've worked on. I worked on my father's farm. I worked on several of my grandfather's farms. I think I got 50 cents an hour. Um, I've worked on my great-grandfather's farm. I have a barn that dates to the middle 1800s. That makes me about average in Carroll County. That doesn't make me special in any way. And, and I get tired of hearing that, that, that makes somebody more important than their neighbors. I want to mention briefly emails. We get a lot of emails. We got a lot of emails on this. We try to answer them, and we try to answer them correctly. And I won't mention whom, but one of the emails we got as a repeat, the only replies we received through our previous emails and questions was a smart remark from one commissioner, and who'd have thought that was me? But my remark, "Thank you for your comments. You have every right to your opinion." And, and I've learned, and, and I, I get a one or two-page email, and it's like, you know, well, these have to happen and blah, 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 to set and nitpick the, the reasons, um, to me serves no purpose, and it only leads to, uh, to maybe more negative comments. My comment was sincere. I, I want, I want to let you know, I read the email, thank you for it, I disagree, and, but you have every right to your opinion. You don't have to agree with me, I don't have to agree with you. That's, that is not disrespectful, and, 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 uh, to me, that's better than no response. A couple other brief comments. I understand the residents and their view. I also understand some of the farmers who say, I don't owe you a view, but when, when there's industrial-type facilities on ag, that's, that's a little bit different than somebody spreading manure or doing beans this year instead of corn. Um, and, and I do think we do owe our neighbors some quality of life, and we, and we need to be consistent about that. Again, I want, I want to end it with challenging everybody. I think we need to look at solar and where it can be. I don't know that I feel strongly it shouldn't be on any ag. I understand there's a possibility that the federal and state government are talking about adding, um, adding rules that would allow it on ag preservation ground. I'm not sure if that's appropriate or not. I just thought the ag remainders were a poor place to put it. And, and I, and I want to speak to the farmers. The guy that farms our five acres, he has corn this year. He has some large solar panels. He has some large solar panels mixed in with his buildings that pay much of his or all of his electric bill. He tried wind when everybody thought that was the answer in Carroll County, and I ride by the wind, the wind devices setting still more days than not, but then he went to solar, and I say more power to him. You know, those panels look fine, and it's appropriate, and it's furnishing him his energy. I think we just need to, this shouldn't be the end of talking about where solar ought to be. This should be the beginning, and I just want to challenge everybody to do that. And I'm sorry I didn't have it all pre-typed, but thank you for allowing me some time.
No, but I appreciate going after you and not Mr. Seventeen syllables over there.
No less eloquent, though.
No, I appreciate it, and appreciate all of the comments made, both from the community over this time and from my colleagues. You know, Commissioner Gordon saying not predisposed, walking in the door is so important. Also, the comments about the Constitution and July 4th that you both brought up, it resonates, and it resonates to me. I mean, somebody sent me, and actually, what you also brought up about Pride Month, somebody sent to me a post that I had on social media. And the post was, and I'm looking at, and it says, "I'd rather be excluded for the people I include than be included for the people I exclude." And then it says, "Commissioner Rothstein's recent Facebook post supporting LGBT transgender values and how they remind him of his 30 years of military service." I don't know if that was to challenge that or if that was to appreciate that. I said, "Thanks." I said, "I said, 'Thank you.'" I mean, this is great, this is exactly the way I believe. I spent 30-plus years in uniform, and when somebody thanks me, I turn around and say, "Thank you for giving me a reason to be more accepting and not prejudge and be predisposed." It may not be my cup of tea, I may not want it, it may not incentivize me, this lifestyle or whatever the issue may be. But it's like, why would I want to judge that? So, yeah, keep, keep it coming, whoever sends me things like this, because I was like, this is exactly the way I feel. I don't know if that's what they wanted to send a message or not. And it got me thinking just a whole lot, walking in the door, how am I going to approach this? You know, when you talk about writing the Constitution a long time ago and how it has stood the test of time, from those that wrote it that weren't perfect, knowing they weren't perfect, and knowing that they put on that parchment something that was going to, you know, at their point, hopefully, challenge everything we do. And it has, and we've added to it and we amended it, but we've only amended it, I think, like maybe 26 times or something like that, I don't know, I'm not a scholar in this, but, and not a whole lot. So they did something really well. So whoever said this is a microcosm of that, boy, talk about a hefty compliment to be made. I definitely believe we're not perfect. And the reason I'm bringing a lot of this up is, we went through a process, and maybe the process is flawed, where the Board of Commissioners, which I believe is the best governance for Carroll County, not a county executive, but a board of commissioners, came together and said, "We need to look at this. We need to look at this problem set." And the problem set had to deal with solar, and a potential solution had to deal with solar being put on agricultural properties. And when we requested our staff to look into this, which was, I think, in like a December timeframe of 2020, and then it came to us in May of 21, where the ordinance was then being pushed forward. It was a challenging time, maybe we should have recognized the challenging time it was because people were not as aggressively listening to the community, nor was it touching the community, nor did we have the insight of where it would be touching the community, the secondary, tertiary effects. So maybe we got to look at a better way of, the decisions we make, be a little bit more forward-thinking in our long-term thinking and planning of its secondary, tertiary effects. Not until somebody's out there with a tape measure, or, you know, an engineer's out there doing the A and E for a potential, does a neighbor or somebody say, "Yeah, this is a problem." And didn't see that coming, I mean, to be honest. I mean, I didn't. I made a decision, it was an independent decision that was not swayed by my colleagues, it was a convincing argument to what I believe was doing what was right. I'm allowed to change my mind, I mean, it's, I always believed, you know, and I, well, you asked me yesterday, when did I start saying life is good? And I think I started saying that 20, 30 years ago, again, in uniform, when it was really some challenging times, and I remind myself, "Life is good," and it's because of the community. It's my, my family, my friends, my neighbors, it's the community. And so the decision we made wasn't forced on us to make. We thought it was the right decision to make. Maybe it's not. Maybe in a few years, we're going to look at this and say, you know, let's look at another way of slicing, slicing this out. We're 78,000 acres, and we're going to be adding some in just a little bit, 78,000 acres of preserved agricultural property in Carroll County, with a 1980 goal of 100,000 acres, probably the longest-standing goal we have in Carroll County. Probably one of the longest-standing goals there is in Maryland, you know. So I am challenged, what makes me who I am, especially as, I guess, a Republican, is having the smallest government possible, that's why Commissioner Form to me is the best, and also really believing in property owners' rights. You know, I, I just, I really do. And that's, that's my biggest challenge right now, is you got community, you got property owner, and it's just, it's a challenge. It's not, it's not the, not in my backyard syndrome necessarily, but it's, you know, it's not, what am I going to look at, my front yard or backyard? It's, are we doing what, are we doing what's right for Carroll County? We're taking away opportunities for some property owners, but they haven't gone through the process very far. So we're sending a very strong message, I apologize being so lengthy, and I'll shut up in a second. We're sending a very strong message that we are very proud to be an agricultural community. And, and we're in front of so many others that strive to get us there. We have too many other challenges to deal with, you know, the blueprint, marijuana and all that other garbage, that's, you know, we have a responsibility and authority. This lays in our hands, both the responsibility and the authority, so it's, it's an opportunity to take it. Somebody mentioned Hampstead. If you haven't been up there and you get the opportunity, it's amazing. It is an incredible use of a rooftop, and we are, should be very proud, is, I think, the fourth-largest in the country rooftop solar. That is just amazing. So there are locations to be used. Let's see. Okay. Like Commissioner Kyler, I'm not nearly as fluid in my thoughts as Commissioner Vigliotti. I'm a bunch of, you know, scribbles all over the place, so.
Oh, sorry.
Totally interrupted by a phone. No, I'm kidding.
That wasn't the timer.
Yeah. I think, I think we're ready to have a vote. There was a motion made, and there was a second. Is there any further discussion?
I'll just make one quick comment. Commissioner Kyler made, I think, a very valid and good point, and I kind of wish I had made it, but I'm glad you've made it, about challenging the community. And I think, you know, this isn't the end of solar. I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I personally don't think we should rule out options. I think it's a question of what options and opportunities are out there and how they mix with the foundation that is Carroll County. So I do agree with you, I think we do need to keep an eye open, I think we need to be mindful of opportunity. I think the big thing is just, how does that fit into the foundation and our principles? I appreciate you mentioning that.
Call for a vote, all in favor of removing whatever it was, 158 dot 153 subsection E? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? None. Okay, thank you. Let's move on to agricultural land preservation.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Let's just give it a minute, and is it just you, Chris, or is JP here?
We're going to get you guys on some other committees.
I hope so.
We all need to get together and have a, yeah, we need to have a big.
It's not about somebody's property, nor their backyard.
So, well, Mr. Barr.
I hope so.
If we need to do anything else, public notice-wise, whatever-wise, this is, this takes effect on the 23rd and it's over?
Yes. We are going to record it, put a notice in the newspaper that we adopted it, but at the 23rd.
I'm sure the newspaper will pick it up, so, which, again, we got to be careful what we say because I was commented out of context again in the paper, and I was like, you know, I'm getting just tired of it. Let's talk about the James R. Cook and Diane and Cook property.
Sure. Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
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 I want to try to start out today with letting you know how many acres we have preserved. We have 78,315 acres as of today that are preserved, settled, and recorded. Tomorrow, we'll be settling on another 130-plus acres, so things are moving along really well right now.
Fantastic.
And so, just with that, we'll get into what we're getting into. Thank you.
Since you, since you mentioned that, how many acres are like in process, even verbally or in writing, a lot more than that?
Oh, yes, sir. What would be a good guess?
I am going to say over 2,000 acres right now. Over 2,000, closer to 2,500.
There's an awful lot going on right now.
Oh, I know.
That's awesome.
So it's keeping us very, very busy.
Awesome.
And we're trying to keep you busy with approvals. So anyway, this morning, we're starting with James and Diane Cook property at 3755 Backwoods Road in Westminster. They have a 67.56 acre farm. This is one of our remainder farms, they have no lot rights to retire. The fair market value of the land only was $224,470.27. The cost of the easement will be $157,129.19, which is $2,325.77 per acre. This is where the farm sits on Backwoods Road, and this is how the farm fits in with other ag-preserved properties in the area.
Nice. Cool.
A few pictures of the farm.
Oh, that is beautiful.
So here we are today, asking for final approval of the James and Diane Cook property, 3755 Backwoods Road, Westminster, 67.56 acres, with a fair market value of $224,470.27, at a cost to the county of $157,129.19.
Commissioner Vigliotti, you want to do the honors?
Well, thank you very much, Commissioner. Motion to exercise an option to purchase an easement on the James and Diane Cook property in the amount of $157,129.19.
Second.
Got a motion, second and discussion, senior, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks. Now let's talk about the Humbert property.
Thank you, commissioners. Next, we're doing the Bradley Humbert property, which is located on Muller Road in Westminster. It's a 164.14 acre property, we're retiring seven lot rights. The fair market value of the land only was $1,367,125.64. The cost to the county, which is 70% of the fair market value, is $956,987.95. This is the farm just south, south of Muller Road. This is where the farm fits with other preserved properties. And we do have farms adjacent to that that are available for preservation in the future. Some pictures of the property off of Muller Road.
Another beautiful place.
So today, we're asking for final approval of the Bradley Humbert property on Muller Road in Westminster, 164.14 acres, seven lot rights to retire, at a cost of $956,987.95.
Commissioner Gary, you want to do the honors on this one?
Sure.
I apologize.
It's all right. I don't know if I have that. Yeah, okay. Hold on a second, I just want to make sure I have it. There we go. I move the Board of Commissioners exercises an option to purchase an easement on the Bradley Humbert property in the amount of $956,987.95.
I got a motion, a couple seconds, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, commissioners. This is another remainder property, 3610 Baker Road in Westminster, the Jeffrey and Janice White property. There are no lot rights to retire. The fair market value of the land only was $244,835.89. The cost to the county, which is 70% of that fair market value, is $171,385.12. This is the farm on the west side of Baker Road, just south of Route 27. This is how the farm fits in with other ag-preserved properties in the area, and we do have other properties adjacent to that that are eligible for the program.
Yeah, I was going to say, there's opportunity surrounding that.
Yes, sir.
Cool.
Few pictures of their property. So again, we're here today for final approval of the Jeffrey and Janice White property, located at 3610 Baker Road in Westminster, 66.69 acres, with a fair market value of $244,835.89, with a cost to the county at $171,385.12.
Okay, now the District Four, Commissioner Gary?
I move the Board of Commissioners exercises an option to purchase an easement on the Jeffrey and Janice White property in the amount of $171,385.12.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second and discussion, senior, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
One more quick question, I can't hold myself. You, you have a few different options on how You, you have a few different options on how ag pres can go, a county program, a state program. These were all county?
These today were all county. Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and if, if somebody out there wants to find out if they can get into this, just make contact with you guys, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. There's information on the county website as well. So we are the best contacts.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's get an update on the FY23 Local Management Board Community Partnership.
Look, they found your clock.
Good deal.
I'm not sure if that means something, that the clock got put back up while we're presenting.
It meant it was time for good people to come to present.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm joined today with Cory Hardinger from our Grants Office. Um, and I'm Celine Steckel, the Director of Citizen Services. We wanted to come before you today to provide an update on the FY23 Local Management Board Community Partnership Agreement and the Community Support Impact Grants. As you know, the Local Management Board receives annual funding from the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention, Youth, and Victim Services. That funding is used to support different pieces of our Local Management Board operations. And that includes community programs, community supports, the operation of the local care team, and then also the LMB administration. We wanted to make sure that we expended any remaining funds from some of the vendors that may not have been, um, pushed out during their use in the, in the fiscal year. And so we decided we wanted to push out an opportunity to provide, um, some of our youth-serving organizations to develop mini projects that would engage our at-risk youth, um, in Carroll County with support through these grants. When we set out the Request for Proposal Guidance, it included that the funding could be used to purchase equipment and products that would directly benefit the youth that they serve. Um, and it really needed to be geared to providing support towards education and team-building for at-risk youth. There were no salaries or positions that were funded through this grant. Through this grant, we were able to, um, support six agencies with funding, up to just five thousand dollars. But those agencies put that money to good use. The agencies were the Westminster Youth Project, the Mid-Atlantic Gigabyte Innovation Collaboratory, better known as MAGIC, Find Your Purpose, Carroll County Workforce Development, Conictondo Us, and the Boys and Girls Clubs of Carroll County. I do want to note that the LMBs are encouraged by the state to provide opportunities for grassroots nonprofits that would not otherwise be eligible for funding, um, or have the capacity to apply for larger grants because they don't have that infrastructure. And, uh, the guidance that's actually stated is that this integrated approach ensures that grassroots organizations, organizations representing underserved communities, and organizations with limited resources are not penalized by the process. Instead, they will be supported in their growth and stability as they provide critical and authentic services to the community. So I think that was important to note. That was another piece of why we really wanted to push out this money. We know a lot of these grassroots organizations are doing boots-on-the-ground work, making that impact directly to these at-risk youth that may, may not want to engage in other traditional service provision. So we wanted to make sure that, um, that was understood, how important that that was. I would like to highlight some of the services, though, that the, the agencies decided to use the funding for and what they presented as their projects. The Westminster Youth Project, which is a youth-driven program based in restorative practices with an emphasis on empathy and accountability, has received funding for equipment, supplies, and products for program use to support the needs of the at-risk youth in Carroll County. The MAGIC collaborative, collaborative, um, has proposed that they have, um, purchased ten Vex IQ robots to provide hands-on secondary learning opportunities for low-income middle school students in Westminster to prepare them for certification and hopefully eventual employment in a STEM field, robotics and engineering. Their plan is to deliver bi-weekly after-school sessions, four-to-six week courses, um, to up to forty students, so running two separate sessions.
I'm sorry, what, what is a Vex IQ robot?
The Vex IQ robots are a learning, like a learning robot to work with STEM, um, projects in the school system, so.
Thank you.
Sure. And the other piece of that, too, is that they already have a relationship and a partnership with Carroll County Public Schools. So they are already in the school system doing that work, so this was an easy, um, add-on for them.
Awesome.
Uh, Find Your Purpose also, uh, is an agency that aspires to elevate and empower through mentorship, experiential learning, and entrepreneurship opportunities. They encourage the community to come together and enjoy activities and programs in a family-like atmosphere that their nonprofit organization has to offer. They're under the Community Foundation of Carroll County. Um, and they also, uh, received funding to support the purchase of supplies and equipment, um, and also to fund admission for some of the activities that they do for their children and the families. It's the youth and the adults engaged altogether. And so that was another great opportunity for them. We also funded our Carroll County Workforce Development with their Youth and Young Adult Service Program. What happens is sometimes their grant funding through the YO, um, YO grant does not provide for some other program needs. And this funding was able, um, was able to provide them with the support that they needed to actually go out and purchase some, um, digital equity, um, items such as Chromebooks for the students. And then also, they purchased some iPads for their staff to be able to expand their reach into the community and provide those services to assist clients with applications and events such as job fairs, community resource fairs, and high school career and education events.
I appreciate the support they're getting. Is this the best? You know, I mean, they're a government, they're not a 501(c)(3), they're not grassroots, they're, they're part of us. And I do believe they should get the funding to do what they're doing. But is this, you know, you believe this is the best path, or is it, I mean, for the funding, what are your thoughts?
We, you can speak to it.
They're, so they're serving, um, you know, kids with lots of barriers to employment. Um, and they're, we owe a grant, which is a large federal grant they receive. It's very restrictive. It is mostly, uh, salaries and some training, um, opportunities. So there's, there are lots of things that they really need to kind of supplement the work that they do. And they, this is one way that they could do that. Um, they, they have very little flexibility under that grant as to, um, you know, some of the extras that make their job more complete and make, make things more accessible for youth. So, you know, they, we've spoken to them multiple times, really, about opportunities. And this is one time that it kind of aligned with what we were looking for. Um, so this is an ongoing challenge for them to have, um, you know, extra iPads and technology and to really promote digital literacy. You know, they serve a lot of kids who, um, you know, just giving them a iPad or giving, using an iPad isn't enough. They need to learn how to use it. So that, that hands-on learning is available for them, too.
Yeah, it's not so much the, uh, the reasoning for the money, but it's, it's more the, the path. It's not the, the action or activity. Once the money's there, it's, you know, using these grants or this grant money for this effort. You know, my expectation was, you know, I'd be seeing like MAGIC, like other 501(c)(3)'s, other smaller, like you said, grassroots, don't have the staff or the, uh, resources to go after, you know, other grants or opportunities.
Yeah, I certainly understand. I mean, I would say that the, so the Connecting Youth Program that's funded through the Local Management Board works very closely in partnership with, um, Carroll Workforce Development. They serve a lot of the same kids. So I, you know, part of our thinking, I think, that it kind of aligned with what the Local Management Board does in serving kids that are not connected to work in school.
Okay.
So. And, and Workforce Development is a member of our LMB as well. And they're a strong partner in a lot of the, the efforts and, and the decision-making that we do through that board. So. We also were able to fund Conictondo Us to receive, um, educational and programmatic support and purchase books for some of their youth. They do provide specific services to the, um, Latina population in Carroll County. And with the help of this grant, um, they also are providing support to individuals to earn, to learn languages, to connect with their communities. They offer Spanish to English classes and English to Spanish classes to make sure that it's not just connecting with the community, but also connecting with their families. And so that's another great impact that they provide. We also provided support to the Boys and Girls Club of Carroll County. Uh, they received funding, um, for their at-risk youth, including elementary-age youth in the after-school and, um, summer programs, and middle and high school youth in the Leadership Program. Specifically, they were able to help support youth to go to a youth, um, retreat on an eighty-acre center, which included activities of zip lining, canopy tours, high-rope course, climbing towers, problem-solving challenges, and much more. They also engaged the youth in a Be Kind Sign Workshop, which is the wooden crayon sign, where they were able to, um, incorporate the kindness workshop with the Infinite Love Project, doing a, uh, creating a sense of wellbeing through positive messaging, mindfulness, and community services. And it really connected with their mission, uh, to build resilience and positive mental health for youth. So the Be Kind Signs you will see around, they will be displayed in the community and then also donated to a class, some will be donated to classrooms. Um, they were also able to purchase some virtual reality headsets with software packages to focus on educational opportunities for the youth as well. So, um, all that being said, uh, I think we, we have done, and those were just some of the projects that, that we wanted to highlight. But I think that, all that being said, we've really done, um, I think they've done some great work in the community with, it's a, a lot of money, but a little bit of money, right? Five thousand dollars is not a lot, and not all of them took the full amount. But I do believe that, I also wanted to come to you now also to speak to the fact that you, you know, we, um, submitted our application for the Youth Homeless Demonstration Project. And in that, a lot of these nonprofit grassroots organizations are instrumental in helping to step up and, and fill some gaps in services that we have. Another piece of that puzzle for the Youth Homeless Demonstration Project is that we had to provide a voice from our youth to answer very specific questions that HUD designated about that, um, about the services that we provide, but they wanted to hear the youth speak to it. And the youth had the option of either writing, some information to add to the grant to respond to those questions, or to create a video. Um, and we were able to work with Find Your Purpose and the Westminster Youth Project, and, and our Youth Action Board to create a video, which we'd like to show you now. It's about six minutes, if, if you're comfortable with that.
Absolutely.
And I think that Chris has, has it loaded on here for me now?
Can I ask one question on this before you get on that? This is a diverse group, some small groups, some larger groups, who are using it hopefully for the right niches. And, and five thousand, like you said, it seems like a small amount of money. But, um, you're just as diligent with five thousand and the paper, I mean, grants are paperwork-intensive and, and if, if I buy the wrong thing, you tell me, and, and this is-
Absolutely. And we had, we went back and forth and denied some, 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 uh, some proposals as far as what they thought they, they could purchase with the funding because it's very specific. And it's also governed by our state LMB guidance on, on what we can and cannot use the funding for. The other pieces, we have contracts with each one of these vendors for this, this amount as well. Um, so we have those agreements on hand that really specify the guidance and what they need to adhere to.
It was reimbursable, so we didn't just hand them five thousand dollars and say, tell us what you did. So they, they submitted, like Celine said, invoices, and, you know, we went through them to make sure that what they were purchasing was allowable. And some, some wasn't, so we said no.
Thanks.
I know Jenny, you're happy to hear that, right?
She wasn't making faces. That was my question.
Alright, so, um, and this is the video that, that we had the support of these agencies to help us put together. And then obviously, our youth that, um, were on board with having us share their story.
The mission of the Youth Action Board is to raise awareness about youth homelessness here in Carroll County and to garner support and resources, um, for the youth that find themselves on the streets. The only people that can be on a Youth Action Board are youth. You have to be under the age of twenty-four. I am, I act as an advisor to the, um, Youth Action Board in just providing, um, support and a space for them to meet. The Youth Action Board is, um, made up of youth from all different walks of life. Some people, when they think about homeless youth, they think about poor, um, youth who have, you know, come from rough families. That's not always the case. Um, sometimes it's kids who have come from really nice families. But one of the things that we see here in Carroll County is, um, very diverse group. Kids that are youth of color. We have, um, youth who are part of the LGBTQ plus community. And, um, youth who, um, identify as a different gender than the one they were born with. Um, one of the things that the Youth Action Board does, though, is, um, welcomes everyone through the doors. And everyone has a voice when they come through and sit down in the circle.
I feel like one of the, like, challenges or barriers is, like, any lack of support or funding. Like, funding is very hard to get, especially if it's like a Youth Action Board. And sometimes it just comes like right out of your pocket.
There tends to be, um, like a stigma when it comes to being homeless. You don't have access to food. You don't have access to a lot of certain things. So you're gonna develop a eating disorder where, you know, you disassociate with food. And as soon as you have food, it's like, you just, you just scoff it down. And then it's like, you kind of have to figure out, when am I gonna eat next? Because you don't know the next time you're gonna eat.
I think more youth-led events would be more beneficial. It would be easier as a youth to talk to another youth member. Just for conversational, it's more, it's less intimidating. It's easier to understand and, um, just more relatable. It's so much easier. I wouldn't feel as much judgment.
Some of the biggest risk factors, um, for youth to become homeless or be at risk, probably include, um, not being able to afford paying rent or paying for, like, the bills, like electricity, all that. And as well as, like, risk of being thrown out by your family because you're not straight. Like a hypothetical situation, um, if someone were to come out as transgender and their family is not accepting of that stuff, that child could be thrown out and not be given any kind of support until longer down the line.
As someone who's part of the LGBT community myself, um, it's, it can be scary.
The biggest barriers to sustaining our Youth Action Board is transportation, number one. That's the biggest one. Kids cannot get to us. Carroll County's a big place. Um, and unless you live in downtown Westminster, it's really hard to get here for these meetings. Number two, I would say, uh, people don't want to come out of hiding because they're afraid. They're afraid that they're gonna be taken away from their families. They may be separated from siblings. They may have a comfortable living situation right now, sleeping on someone's sofa. As adults, we know that that is not stable housing. But for them, it's something that they're comfortable with right now, and they may not want to rock the boat. So it's, it's really about us spreading awareness that, that's, uh, it's okay to come forward and to ask for resources and that it's not gonna jeopardize your current situation.
We know we've reached success when we see a lot more kids in the community, you know, not having as many mental health crises or not being able to properly express their feelings. Um, a lot of the times, you see that in anger. So with youth-led groups and certain activities that we can do together, going out to the parks, or just simply talking to each other without an adult, that can help. It can help. And in the long run, you'll see a lot more kids opening up. A lot more kids wanting to tell their story and share what they've been through so that they can help others and they can lead them as well.
I feel like success, like, if we do get the funding, if we do, like, receive the grant from the county, um, is one, receiving the grant, like, because we succeeded in getting our point across. And then we succeed in serving all walks of life that come into the building and get what they need for help. Because we finally can get, like, any tools and supplies to help those people.
Success for our Youth Action Board, um, would mean that our community just steps up and wraps around these kids and supports them. Having our kids finally have their voices heard, um, I think that's success.
If there's one thing I have to leave you all with, it's that this county's- If there's one thing I have to leave you all with, it's that this county's youth is supported by the youth. Because there is nothing about us without us.
Okay, thank you for sharing that.
You're welcome. And I think that was pretty much our presentation today, but just also to note that if we do get into the next phase and we are awarded the funding through the Demonstration Project, then we would be in a planning phase for up to nine months, I believe it is, and working with the community providers and the community and the LMB and all of you to really look at how we want to develop that plan and spend those funds, and where our biggest gaps are, and how we can make the biggest impact, so.
And I think that's incredibly important. I mean, seeing that number, that there are 190 homeless youths in Carroll County Publics, 190, that's staggering. And if, you know, we can find some way to assist them, then yeah.
Absolutely.
The, I think you and I spoke about this probably months ago, but I know we had an LMB manager. We have an LMB manager position. That person resigned, moved on to something else. Where are we with the current LMB manager hiring process?
We are right there. We have selected a candidate, and we will be making an offer. And so we are, we are right there. That's all I can say publicly about it right now. But definitely, it's a big position, a big leadership position. There are a lot of pieces to the puzzle and a lot of collaboration that is done at the lead and hand of our LMB and the members on the LMB that you all appoint to that board.
And it is a big responsibility. And as you bring that person on, I'm sure some of the conversations you're having with that individual is, I mean, the LMB serves important functions, but we've got to make sure we're paying attention to how these particular nonprofits are organized, how they're managed, how they're spending their money, whether it's state money or local money, of course, it's all taxpayer money. So, and avoid any, you know, any issues or questions moving forward with any of them. I see that as probably the most important job of the LMB manager. So I'm encouraged to hear you've got somebody. I noticed the job requirement, I think, was no longer listed, so I thought maybe something was happening, but I thought I'd ask you.
Yeah, the posting had been up, and then it was taken down, and we just finished interviews.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you all.
Okay, now let's talk about expenditures with debt proceeds.
Sorry, I don't have a video to show you guys, because bond-
Sing a song, tell a joke, you know.
Good morning, or good afternoon, it's still-
Good morning, you're good.
Okay. I'm actually here to ask you guys to approve a resolution to declare the county's official intent to reimburse expenditures with debt proceeds. This is an annual process that we do. It's kind of one of those clerical things that we need to do. Following the recent adoption of the FY24 budget, a resolution is to be approved by the Board of Commissioners declaring the county's intent to reimburse community investment planned expenditures that are intended to be funded with those proceeds. This isn't, this action doesn't commit or isn't actually issuing bonds. With this, it just says that we can reimburse those expenditures with future bond issues. The resolution's necessary to meet our Internal Revenue Code regulations for tax-exempt bonds. So I believe in your packets, there was a copy of exactly the pages for the CIP or the Community Investment Plan, shows how they were broken out by function, ties into that, so the total covers $54,768,342 of projected bond funding for those. The resolution has been reviewed and approved by the county attorney's legal sufficiency, so I am asking the board to adopt the resolution.
Do we have a copy of the resolution anywhere, Tim?
I have it.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
Does it say what she says it's gonna say?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It's not that I don't trust, I just, you know, if you wrote on a resolution, you want to see the resolution.
Absolutely, no.
Tim approved it, so, you know.
No, no, Tim approved it for legal sufficiency.
You didn't have a video, you had a resolution.
I had a resolution. It's always good to come with a resolution, to think of.
Didn't you read it first? You ready to make the motion?
Motion to approve the resolution declaring the county's official intent to reimburse expenditures or debt proceeds.
Second.
Serious? Okay.
I read it.
I got a motion, I got a second.
Still reading.
I need discussion on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's go through a few IT, contract renewal for Intellitime Systems Annual Support. And go through three contract renewals, I believe.
Morning.
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 The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Department of Technology Services requests your approval to award the contract for the Intellitime System Annual Support to Intellitime Systems Corporation in the amount of $28,674.80. This support is funded in the fiscal year 24 adopted budget.
Good morning, Commissioners. Charlie Beckhart with Technology Services.
Morning.
This is the standard renewal of the annual maintenance coverage for VTI, Virtual Time Card Interface, which is the county's time and attendance workforce management and scheduling tool. I believe you're all familiar with the organization-wide nature of the product and how every agency on county payroll is a participant. So I'll just stop there and ask if you have any questions regarding it.
This is annual. Is there any value in doing multi-year?
I'm not sure, except that this is the first time that we've had an increase with Intellitime, so I'd like to point that out. They did give us 12 months' notice that they were expecting an inflationary increase this time of 3%. That's what it turned out to be. But since 2017, there has been no increase on this annual maintenance.
Right. So that's a good thing.
It's a great thing. We're very pleased about it.
Yeah, I think just a follow-up, not for this, but to see if there's value in doing multi-year.
Certainly, we'd be glad to look into it.
Okay, thanks.
Motion to award the contract for the Intellitime System Annual Support to Intellitime Systems Corporation in the amount of $28,674.80.
Second.
A motion, second, any discussion? Seeing here, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's talk about maintenance and support for the Mitchell-Humphrey Financial Management System, FMS.
All right. The Office of Procurement in cooperation with Technology Services requests your approval for the renewal of maintenance and support for the Mitchell-Humphrey Financial System. The amount is $62,320 for one year.
Likewise, Commissioners, this is the standard renewal of the annual maintenance for FMS, our financial management system, our primary general ledger, accounts payable, accounts receivable, fixed assets and purchasing, among other things. As an example, should you choose to renew this contract, the payment would be made through FMS. We've been with Mitchell-Humphrey for over two decades, and this is not the original version of the product, obviously. There's been many major upgrades over that timeframe, but this is the standard renewal that we go through.
Yeah, same question. I mean, having confidence with this over two decades, I mean, reaching out for multi-year service support contracts, you know, may be a path forward, but-
Yeah. This was actually a little bit different. If I could point out that the contract that we negotiated back in 1998 includes an escalator clause, it includes a limiting increase that is in lockstep with the CPI. So there was actually a year when the annual maintenance went down, the CPI, the year that the CPI was actually negative, the amount of the annual maintenance that we paid actually went down. So I understand your point, but in this case, the county's protected in that we know that the increase is predictable according to what the economy's doing.
Pretty impressive forward-thinking. I like that. So, okay. Did you want to add something?
I just wanted to make it clear, make sure the board understood that every time we go out with any of these contracts, it is the policy of my department and that we do inquire about multi-year contracts to see if they are worthwhile. So, and I think in the last couple of months, we've had one where it was determined that, and we'll be coming before you with this, where a three-year contract was doing it. A lot of companies don't want to do it now because of the inflation rate, and they're just not willing to move forward. But I wanted you to know that it is our practice that we check every single time that we do this.
Thanks. Okay.
Motion, sorry.
Please.
Motion to approve the annual maintenance and support for the Mitchell-Humphrey Financial Management System, FMS, in the amount of $62,320.
Second.
And a motion against second. Any discussion seen here, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's talk about the Feronics Deploy subscription.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Oh, thank you.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Department of Technology Services is requesting your approval for a three-year renewal of support services for the existing Feronics Deploy subscription from the Feronics, in the amount of $42,000. This amount is approved in the fiscal year 24 budget, and no additional funds should be required.
Good morning. Feronics Deploy is a cloud-based solution that we use to manage Windows updates to our computers. A key feature of Feronics is that it can manage computers wherever they're located, if it is connected to the Internet. This is essential as many staff telework or work on locations not directly connected to the county network. One of our greatest cybersecurity threats are our client computing devices, especially when they are operating outside our traditional network. And the most important way to protect our network is to keep the devices up to date.
Okay.
Motion to award the purchase of the three-year renewal of support services for the existing Feronics Deploy subscription to, how do you say that?
Feronics.
Feronics, thank you. In the amount not to exceed $42,000.
Second.
Got a motion, second, any discussion? Seeing here, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, now I see why I was having difficulty pronouncing that, because it says Feronics Deploy Subscription, and then it's misspelled, it says Feroncis. So I was having difficulty figuring it out. They were spelled differently, and I was thinking maybe there were two different things.
All good. I'm not judging.
That's fixed in the record, we're good.
I'm not judging.
I don't know, I gotta look.
Hey, thanks, guys. Thank you.
Mr. Zaleski, why don't you come on up here and let's talk about school impact fees. And then we'll talk about town-county agreements after that.
So, impact fees, want to give a little bit of introduction for others that are listening, because impact fees are often misunderstood. I think the, maybe the biggest idea that's important for people to get is impact fees are very limited in their use. People often think we can do things with them that we can't. So Carroll County has had a school impact fee for decades, but for the last decade or so, we've had it set to $0. That is, we're not actually charging an impact fee, although it still exists in county ordinance. The reason that we have not been collecting any money is because the use of this impact fee is tied to the need for capacity for a growing student enrollment. We actually went through a number of years of declining student enrollment and then a few years of stagnant enrollment. So there was no prospect for us making use of this money. Now, on a related issue, in case law, it's been established that we can't collect money and just keep it. There has to be a reasonable expectation that it's going to be used. And the kind of idea that's out there is six years is that reasonable timeframe. In the times, in what we've been planning for, we had no expectation that we would be able to use the money in an appropriate way in six years. If you collect it and can't use it, then you need to return it to whoever paid it. So, number one, rather than collect money, hold it, and then give it back to somebody, we didn't see any reason to do that. And the other is, if we did it, you know, you take on it an administrative problem. You have to be able to find all those people again some years after they gave you the money. So a board set it at zero. I don't remember exactly how many times we've come back to this now. It's sometimes been renewed for a year, sometimes two or three years, I think. But we are back to a point where we need to do it again. But the story might be changing now. Where we've been for the last 10 or 12-so years, at least potentially looks different. The school system had an increase of about 700 students this year. I think they believe that that is largely an actual increase in new students. I still wonder how many of those might be kids who left because of COVID that are coming back. But whatever the answer is there, we're moving past that. That's not a long-term issue. But there's some growth there, clearly there's some growth. The school system is projecting continued growth, not the kind of growth we saw in the 90s, but growth again. If you have growing enrollment, then you do open the idea that there might be a point where impact fees will be needed and used for providing additional capacity. So when I say the story might be changing, now is the time for us to discuss, however you decide to act today, do we think we need to think about this differently? Now, when we did have the impact fee in place, it was approximately $6,000 per unit. If you decide you want to put this back into action again, we can return to where it was. There's nothing that requires you to do that, that's totally in the hands of the Commissioners. Now, just, again, for people listening, to give some context for this, because I think some people probably think that reinstating the impact fee will do more than it really will in terms of how much funding we'll create. You know, if you think of us doing, say, 300 units a year now, and you return to $6,000 per unit, that would be about $1.8 million a year. $1.8 million is still a lot of money, but when you look at the cost of school projects, you're not gonna do a school with $1.8 million. This is just a little piece of funding. If you said, "Well, we want to do something, but we don't want to do $6,000, we think that's too much, let's do $3,000." That $1.8 a year is now $0.9 million a year. So again, not nothing, but not a game changer in terms of funding school construction. So that's where we are. We do need to take some action. Today was set up as briefing discussion, so today is not the day for an action. But sometime soon, we either need, well, we need to set it somewhere, you know, whether it's setting it again at zero or setting it at some number where we are gonna start collecting again.
Well, we can make an action this morning, correct? I mean, that's-
Well, that's not what your agenda says, and that's what the public may-
Okay.
Have been misled by that, if that's, was your intention to vote on it today.
That's fine. You know, I definitely believe in doing our due diligence and our homework prior to making decisions, but I'm also sometimes frustrated how long things take before a decision can be made, you know.
Well, in setting the agenda, it's a tough problem sometimes, because we've had situations where boards have said, "Why isn't this set up for a decision? We're not there yet."
Right.
Yeah, so sometimes you try and make a call, what is presenting information and what is decision time? And, you know, maybe on this one- And, you know, maybe on this one, got it wrong.
No, no, it's all good. I just, you know, earlier when we were doing priority Carroll, Commissioner Garin did I believe a very good job to the community recognizing the importance of understanding the blueprint and understanding the pieces of the blueprint, not just blueprint as a whole. And I think it kind of went down the road, or the row that we all have significant concerns and challenges in the joint meeting we had yesterday, was it? Yesterday with the Board of Education. We're not going to tax our way out of this, no matter how much taxes we put in place, even if that's a gesture, we're not going to get there. And nor do we have an attitude, I believe amongst us, to do it that way. Fees are different, you know. Kind of like the, the last decision we made dealing with my thoughts, and I'll stop after this, is the decision we made with agricultural zoning and solar, you know. The impact is only seven homes and it's a very small community. It's not about this one community that people came here and said, we don't want this, but it's about the entire county and what is the attitude of the entire county? And we got, I think it may be time to, to look at putting impact fees back in place. And it, it may only be 1.8 million dollars at the end of the day with $6,000 per unit, but it gives, you know, I think it's the right gesture, putting it in place. I still believe we should talk to the delegation about other opportunities. They may say, yeah, no, that ain't going to work, but, so we got, we, we got some tough challenges in front of us. And so I'm more in favor of putting impact fees in place, understanding the case law, the reasonable expectations. It ain't going to be everything, but it'll be a step in the right direction in both our attitude and moving forward and doing what's necessary with some of these schools that are being challenged, so.
A couple other related thoughts, you know, as you say, that made me, made me think, I want people to understand, I have no particular stand on this, if we should have an impact fee or should not have an impact fee, it's just, it's a, a choice we can make, a tool to figure out how we, we fund. And then if we, we do got to do this, two other things that probably be on your mind. There are groups who will be automatically opposed to this. You know, people who are developing, people who are looking to buy a house, realtors are all going to say, this is a, a bad idea. And there was the third thing I was going to say, I don't remember what it was now, though.
So when, when would we look at having this? Did you just remember it?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Well, the when is.
I could, I could tell, yeah.
You'll have to decide when does this take effect. Now, if the agenda is not full, I mean, you can do it next week. But the, the when does it take effect will be important because there'll be people who will be very interested in the specific date. Somebody is going to be on the right side of the date and somebody is going to be on the wrong side of the date.
So maybe worth bringing up between now and hopefully next week. I don't see, I don't see why, this is something we have to particularly delay on, but, you know, we're talking about impact fees and their effect on schools, but I, what I think people need to remember, though, is that for the past, I think, five-plus years, this, this Board of County Commissioners has fully funded or almost fully funded the requests from the public school system. So that's not an issue. What I think is also important to mention is that the, we don't know, always know what these numbers are going to look like in the long run. I mean, we think enrollment's going to go up and numbers are, these numbers are very hard to, to predict, if you will. I think what's also important to mention is that, and, and I guess you can clarify this to me, for me, but don't, do we still get funding related to the number of students we have in the system, or has that gone away? Has that gone by the wayside?
No, that's, that's still important, but we, we need to, there's a line here between operating and, and capital. So the impact fee is strictly a, for capital purposes. So it has no impact on the operating side. But to your question on the operating side, a large part of what the state funds is, is still driven by a per pupil amount. And on your, you know, your, your thought that the enrollment projections are projections, and absolutely right, nobody can say we know these numbers. Just to remind you that if you take an action on the impact fees and things don't go where they appear to be going, you can change this at any time. You actually could make a decision tomorrow and then make a different decision the day after that, not suggesting that we'd want to do that, but it's in your hands. You don't have to wait for any particular time period to go by.
So, impact fees only go to new construction and the 6,000 is a single family. There's not a big difference, but there's some other multifamily, other, other amounts in it. And, and that's what I said so far is correct, right? Just new construction.
Yes, when, when we had, when we had, we had charge in place, there were three or four different ones for different types of housing.
Yes.
But construction in Carroll County is overwhelmingly single family.
Yeah, so we're talking what happens most. My, my concern would be, so let's say, let's say we do this and we do the 6,000 and it's 1.8 million, and in the next four or five years, we accumulate six, seven million. What, what could we possibly spend it on and what's the likelihood of that happening in that time period?
Yep, good, good questions. And that's why, you know, at the beginning, I said, it might be time to start thinking about this. I'm, I'm not necessarily advocating that now is the time to change, but, you know, you're, you're exactly right. What we need to be thinking about is, how likely is it that we think we're going to collect this money and spend it in the, in the next six years? And it's a complicated question because it's going to be tied to, is enrollment increasing in a way that leads us to provide additional capacity so that we're providing the same level of service that existed? And in this case, same level of service means you have the same kind of room available for the 100 students you had today as you did for the 50 students you had, had yesterday. And it's, it's an unknown. We have projections, but, but we don't know what's going to happen. And it's further complicated, and I know a lot of people who are going to be interested in this conversation are the people in, in the Southeast where we have schools that are being squeezed. The impact fee as it exists now is set up with countywide boundaries, both how we collect it and how we, we spend it. And we have to consider capacity outside of the schools that might be a concern. You can't just look at a single school and say, this school is overcrowded, so impact fees are, are appropriate. So I don't have, I don't have a good answer for you, but I think, I think you're thinking about it exactly right, and that's part of what we need to do before we act. And it could be that in the short term, we say, yes, things might be changing, but it's not time to act yet.
And that's, I think that's my feeling is, is maybe it's not quite time, but I think we need to alert the world that it soon may be. But, but I'm, I'm, I'm just not, I'm not sure. It's a, and it's hard to, for me, to grasp this, but things take so long, you know, to, you know, you look at East Middle or Career Tech, which weren't related to increased enrollment, but how long it took from the time somebody said, let's, let's look at doing that to, you know, the students are really going to be in it next year. It's, it's, sometimes that takes five or six years.
Yeah, and that will remain true. You know, new school projects have to go through a lengthy process and as much as we might want it to happen faster, there's, there's really very little to do in most cases.
I mean, this is, the, the conversations, you know, from the previous board, I mean, very similar, you know? So I'm very appreciative of what the, you know, previous colleagues did over this, but we're still, the, the challenge is, we need something. We gotta, we gotta put a tool in place, you know? We, we started and, and we talked about this yesterday, you know, the, one of the first things I, I did was really try hard working with the Board of Education, CCPS, to put a redistricting committee together to look at the challenge of Carroll County. And they did. They put the South Area Redistricting Committee, I believe, got all the right people and they did a lot of homework and we put it on the shelf for now because it's just, the appetite's not there to redistrict. Impact fees is another tool. I mean, it's like, we're not going to be able to tax our way out of blueprint. We're not going to be able to redistrict because the appetite's not there to redistrict. You know, if impact fees aren't the right solution, you know, now it's like, okay, we know what the problem is starting to really look like. And it's not just a perception out there, it is a problem. And it is mostly in the Southeast part of the county right now. Will it stay that way? I don't know. But how do we fix or look to fix those two school districts? One that feeds into Liberty and one feeds into, to Century. Mostly it's the one that feeds into Liberty. It really is that school district. And it feeds into Century Two because Sykesville Middle does, is a challenge. I mean, that's where we're at. And yes, I, I do represent that community down there, so I'm, I'm close to it, but I'm trying to figure out, okay, what are solutions? And if impact fees get us towards it, I think it's time we look at changing impact fees, you know, across the county and maybe if we can look at it just from a Freedom District, I, I don't know. I just don't want to keep keeping this can down the road because that's what we've been doing and, you know, it's time to do something to help that community. Those elementary schools are busting.
I think the question is, and I don't, I don't know who we ask, this stuff is so much unknown. Let's say we decide because of the capacity of the individual schools, we add on to Freedom, we add on to Sykesville Middle. If we can't support that it's an enrollment issue countywide, can we use this money for that? And if we can, then that's in three years and maybe it is the time, but can we?
Yeah, and that's another, it's another one of those questions that doesn't have a good, hard answer. Because the risk is that somebody takes you to court saying you're using these inappropriately. And that's why I say, you know, case law drives a lot of how we go about doing this. Now, if you do something and nobody objects, then yes, you can do it. But there are places where you can say, if we do this, there's a higher likelihood that somebody's going to object than if we do this. So, you know, there's, there are choices to be made with some evaluation of, of risk.
You know, we, we said that we're not allowing ag preservation in the designated growth areas, which includes Freedom, which is the largest designated growth area. There's attitude down there that people are paying taxes to subsidize agriculturally property, ag property and preserving it, because that's really what, what's happening. We're using our money to help preserve and meet the goals of Carroll County. So they're saying, why am I subsidizing places that are outside of my district?
I would say that, that line of logic is too limited because you can look at a lot of other services and say.
No, no, I, I agree. And I absolutely agree.
And what percentage of their tax dollar, tax dollar is ag press? 25 bucks?
But, but it's one of those, it's, no, I understand, but it's, it's regardless of the amount, it's a dollar. It's, it's, they're saying my taxes, so it's a dollar and we should see it that way, that it's a dollar. And I'm not pitting Freedom District against, you know, Tawny Town or against, you know, Woodbine or anywhere else. It's, we're, regardless, it's, it's looking at where are the problems within the county? What are some of the ways to solve some of these problems? And then come up with some of these, some solutions. Because this has been an ongoing, maybe, maybe that was a bad analogy, I don't know, but there is a serious concern of the residential growth with new construction down in Freedom District with Free, Freedom Elementary, Carroll Town that are, you know, busting, or getting very, Carroll Town getting very closed, Sykesville Middle. We've got to come up with a solution. And if it's not redistricting, if it's not the Board of Education, because it, people are like looking at us like, you know, don't redi, that's not our choice, you know, that's, but if it's not the school and Board of Education, what are the tools that we have to come up with solution? And I, I don't know, I just, I'm, like I said, we, we can't tax our way out of it. This may be a fee, a gesture, a move in the direction, like you talked about, you know, after six years, getting to $10 million to be able to expand Freedom, I, I don't know, but.
I, I think we do need to, I think we do need to be careful, though, because one of the reasons I mentioned the three things early on here in this discussion, the fact that we have fully funded the school system or almost fully funded at 96% or something like that. We do get compensated per pupil, at least that's the way the formula looks now, and we don't know how these really, numbers are really going to look. I, I don't, I, we, we just have to be careful for people that are listening, whether they're down in District Five or District Four elsewhere, these impact fees will not solve that problem. We, however, I'd point out three other, the, the reason I made the three points that I did is because I don't want people to think we're not doing everything we can. I think we are. And of course, now there is this issue of redistricting, which has turned into an issue of expansion, which I think is the right direction to take. So I, I, let's just, I, I want to be careful because the next thing you know, people are saying, well, let's raise impact fees to save our schools. And that's not going to happen. So I, I don't believe now is the time, but if, as Commissioner Kyler mentioned, maybe there will be a time at some point. That's why I don't know if I want to belabor this in front of the county for the next month or so. If it's an issue we want to look at later on, that might be the time. But let's make sure we're not talking about, you know, either or here. We're already doing, you know, we're trying to do everything we can already.
Also, I think it's, I'm sorry, Commissioner, do you want to?
Just real quick, I think there's valid points on both sides of this, but you know, as Ted mentioned, we don't really know where these numbers are headed at this point. And I know Commissioner Kyler could probably have more knowledge on this than I do by a long shot, but a number of our high schools have been moved down to 1A in sports, which that's based off of population. So if they're being lowered based off of population on that end, is that, is that showing us a clear direction we're headed? I mean, clearly they're being lowered to 1A, which means there technically is less population. Now, that doesn't solve the other issues we're dealing with. And I think, you know, not pointing fingers, but you know, a few years ago, we were told, you know, there was going to be this massive decrease, hence why certain schools were closed, and I'm not getting into that this morning. But I think, I think objectively, I don't think it would hurt to at least look at what's been done previously, look at whatever those various points were, Ted, you mentioned, was it 6,000 for a single-family home and so forth, and see what those other breakdowns are and at least look at it. But I think the reality is, you know, we are in a, a tricky spot here because, you know, this is going to be passed on to the consumer that buys a home. So whether you're buying a single-family home or a town home, you know, we're kind of running back around in that circle again to, can I afford to buy a home? Now, that doesn't solve what we're looking at, but I think we should at least take a look at it all sides of this at this point.
You know, on the, a couple of points on the enrollment. Now, we actually did see a significant decline in enrollment. I think we went down about 2,000 students over, over a decade. I mean, so that wasn't just theoretical, that really happened. Now, as far as high schools now go, we're seeing the pressures at the elementary school level now and some at the middle school level, and the assumption is that will eventually carry into the high school even, but right now, high schools are. carry into the high school even, but right now, high schools are, are where we have our greatest flexibility.
Yeah, I agree. And, yeah, it's, it's elementary schools, I mean, that are having the biggest impact right now in the numbers. Because, because I agree with you with the, with the high school situation. I, I'm just saying, what's right now on the grounds with a handful of the elementary schools and Sykesville Middle, that something's gotta be done. Now, they have, they, I apologize, Board of Education and the school system have a plan in place to expand, you know, both with added additions. And we talked about that yesterday in our joint meeting. That's not gonna solve all the problems that are out there. I'm just, you know, we've, we've stated zero. I don't wanna say, you know, how much can it hurt, but I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out a solution. I mean, again, so we had something with last year budget, and you're right, I, we have been giving the schools the money they've asked for. I think sometimes they're short-staying, should be asking for more, some, you know, to be honest, so they don't have to be asking like twice. But, but this is capital projects. This is not operational.
Correct.
And they're not asking for. When they ask us for money, they're not asking us for capital projects in the same. When we give them additional money, or, it's really operational dollars.
Well, they are asking us for capital, but two different tracks.
Two different tracks, right.
You know, so maybe one way to think about this, you know, if you leave it at zero, upside is, we don't end up collecting money that we can't use and have to return. Downside is, we may have missed an opportunity to get some revenue in place that we, we could use. If we raise it, upside, you know, we're, we're getting the revenue towards something. Downside, we might find we have collected money that we then later say, oh, things haven't worked out, we can't use this, and now we have to send it back.
And, and I wanna make a point on the operating budget. We haven't near fully funded it. Not too many years ago, we did zero. And, yeah, an operating budget, and, and with the mindset that they were gonna reevaluate later in the year and maybe reconsider, because the county thought they were looking at a deficit. I understand why, but, but, no, it's, there's, there's a five-year plan, and that's been honored, accepted for that year, that wasn't. But the excess they've asked for each year, this is the first year. Last year, you guys did a million of one-time money.
We did one-time, one million.
Over the, the regular budget.
One million or two million? I can't-
I, I don't remember, but-
You're right, it was one-time.
We have largely, of the official request of the school system to us, we have been very close to funding that.
Yes.
But I think, to be fair, from the school system's point of view, their official request isn't necessarily what they believe is what they need to run the school system. So people could be looking at this different ways. You know, what was the number they sent you, and what do we think we need?
And it is operating versus capital, but, but, and, and again, I'm not pretending to say Carroll County's been very fair with the schools over the years. I personally was on the other side of the fence and objected to the, the year was zero. But, and the problem is, it's ongoing money. So, so if it was, whatever, three, four million lost, that's three, four million every year since then.
And just for context for people listening, the year that happened, the entire budget stood still.
Oh, I understand. Like I say, I understand why, but-
Others listening might not know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, but, but it happened.
So I think that, you know, this is a discussion that we do have to have. I agree with the comments made by Commissioner Rothstein and others, that, especially when it comes to trying to account for funding for these things, we can't tax our way out of it. I don't think any of us would be happy or would abide by proposition, I think it was a thirty-four cent tax increase was what would be required to, and that's, that's crazy. And none of us would be in league with that. You know, speaking from a municipal perspective, coming from a municipality and nine and a half years on a city council, impact fees do matter when you have tangible projects, when you have objectives that you can go after. Because what that does is it allows you not to have to raise taxes on everybody else to pay for certain projects. You know, and again, not with, not wanting to proceed with any kind of a thirty-four cent tax increase, we do have to look at other ways of attempting to, to compensate for that, that, you know, difference. You know, if, if we are gonna proceed, though, and I agree with the comments that have been made, if we are gonna proceed with looking at raising or reestablishing a, an impact fee, then we, I wanna make sure that we have, you know, specific reasons and, and, you know, actual objectives to do that. I know something physical tangent, or tangible saying, you know, we need it for this expansion, or we need it for this addition, or we need it for this school, right? So I know that they have, impact fees have to go for certain things. And, and so I think we do have to have this discussion, whether it's, you know, something we conclude today, or something that we continue next week, we have to have it. Because if we're not willing, and again, I don't, again, very clearly, none of us are willing to raise taxes by thirty-four cents. That's crazy. But in order to compensate for, for differences that we are going to be facing, in order to compensate for difficulties that we are going to have, and I don't think any of these problems are intractable, we just have to find the right solutions to them, and we have to have this discussion.
Can CCPS provide that? If they were given X, this is what, they would use it for?
I think it's premature to think we could do that. And this, and this would never be simply a matter of them telling us what to do. In fact, the funding mix is in our hands, not, not theirs. So it's, you know, what projects would emerge?
Right.
And can we tie them to the idea of, of growth?
Yeah, I, I thank you. And that's, I believe where I was thinking through, so.
Didn't, didn't the school board, the school system tell us yesterday? It sounds like they have some real bureaucratic challenges when it comes to projects. I mean, they're having to go through the state to get multiple approvals, site plans, all those things. We were, did we hear correctly, it would be three years before the expansions would even take place on those two schools in the southeast part of the county. So, that's not, that's, that's an important footnote, is that, you know, you asked if the, the school, the county school system could tell us what they'd spend the money on. It sounded like they have to go through so much hurdles that it's hard to predict sometimes.
Yeah, there's, there's an extensive state process, both to determine funding and to get the schools approved. And when we build a school, you know, they, the state is actually signing off on all the design, all, all the engineering. And, and then they have a process for deciding how they're gonna fund schools. Now, they have a lot more money than we do, but what they're being asked for from counties, just like us, exceeds what they have available. So they have a process to determine, you know, who's gonna get what and for what project. And yes, it takes a while. And I think most projects you need to think about in terms of years. Now, it can vary. Doing an expansion is easier because you don't have to find a site, you don't have to do extensive site work. But if you're building a new school, that's, that's, that's a bigger deal.
And, and I think oversimplify, which I love to do, we're not gonna build any new schools in the near future. Now, it looks like we might wanna add to Freedom, we might wanna add to Sykesville. Oversimplify, that's eighteen million dollars, and if the state funds half, which they won't, that drops it to nine million. And that'll be over the next three years. If we think that qualifies for this, maybe it's the time. And then the next thing, it sounds like, is renovation to Liberty, which wouldn't qualify. There's no way it would. So, so it's really, and, and that's where our problems are on, on redistrict and whatever, elementary. And when Commissioner Rothstein brought that up almost four years ago, it was elementary. Well, it's now middle. And, and, and it'll be, you know, high school, but it's the same, you know, if Freedom is probably the most successful elementary school in Carroll County. Hampstead and some would probably gonna yell at me for saying that. But, but, because they're all successful. But I don't think there's any family in Freedom that wants their kid put on a bus and taken to a Westminster or Mount Airy Elementary School. So, so to me, the, the addition is a smart way to try to fix that problem.
Absolutely.
But does it qualify for use of this money? And-
I think Freedom probably a tough call. Sykesville, I think there's a, a better case.
Yeah, so, so if Sykesville- Because of the relocables, or the trailers?
Right. It doesn't appear that the addition at Freedom is actually gonna-
Make more seats.
Do anything to resolve the crowding.
It'll make the school less crowded statistically by moving them from portables into real classrooms. But if it's, and I don't know what it is, if it's eight hundred kids there now, it's gonna be eight hundred kids when it's done.
Right.
Yeah. So, yeah. So that's a toughie. So again, if it's Sykesville, and that's twelve million, and the state funds half, that's six million, do we wanna do money for this? And do you wanna tell your people that don't like the ag pres money, Hampstead, Manchester, and Tawny Town are gonna build houses, and they're gonna help fund Sykesville Middle?
Yep. Yeah. I mean, that's kinda, you know, it's, and I'm, I'm a big believer, this is one county, and everybody has their part to play. That's why, early on, whether it was Charles Carroll or North Carroll Panthelex, I mean, I was, I was all in on what we could do for North Carroll. It's one county, and we gotta look at it that way, and there's different projects. And that's why I'm a bit adamant on this. I just, I'm, I see the problem, we gotta fix a problem. Like you said, there's a lot of bureaucracy, and I'm just, maybe I'm just tired of bureaucracy, and trying to figure out, I don't know.
And I think back when impact fees started in this county, the mindset of some people is, the affluent developer's gonna eat that six thousand, we'll know the homeowner, the homeowner's gonna pay it. It's increasing the cost of a home.
Yeah, well, I've, I'm not gonna say I know, but I've always figured that depends on, on the market.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, if, if it's a tough time to sell houses, yeah, maybe the developer does, does eat it. But if they can get it, they're gonna, they're gonna get it.
Yeah, but, but right now, houses, houses are selling in two weeks with escalating offers.
Yes. So I, I agree, in the current environment, yes.
Right, yeah.
So what's the next step?
We will have to take some action. The question is just, what dollar amount, from zero to something else, do you want to set?
Okay.
You mean action taken today or next week?
No, campaign to-
Right. Well, it wasn't on the agenda as a decision.
So that's the next step, is when do we want this put on the agenda? And, and we're already past June thirty.
I don't care, we're talking about it next week.
For putting a six thousand dollar impact fee?
Yeah, for the discussion about whether or not we need to bring it back.
Should it be a number, or should it just be?
I would suggest just putting to set the impact fee, and then that leaves you the flexibility to do whatever you want.
Yep. Okay. So a decision to set the impact fee for, and put on the agenda for next week? Okay. Sounds good. Let's talk about, I mean, well, I apologize, is that okay with everybody? To talk next week about this, make a decision?
I don't think we have a choice.
Okay, let's talk about the town-county agreements.
Again, a little background. The county has a longstanding, again, decades-long relationship with the eight municipalities, where we share some of our revenue. The rest of the state is under a state law that requires counties to do either a tax differential or a tax rebate in the municipalities to recognize overlap in services. We are not under that law, because we had our revenue sharing in place before that law existed, and they just left us alone. If we were ever to stop doing this, though, I'm sure we would be very quickly pulled into the state law and end up doing more or less the same thing, it would just look a little bit different. So our revenue sharing program, there's a complicated formula that determines how much money goes to each of the municipalities. It's driven largely by population and inflation. How the towns are funded relative to each other can change, depending on what's going on in every, any year. This year, I'm not gonna say everybody, because I don't, I have six of the eight here now, but all six of these are getting increases. Some years, some get increases, and some get, get decreases. But everybody's getting an increase. And in the municipalities, tend to like the formula, in years that gets them a positive result, and not like it so much in years that gets them a negative result. And it's not always the same, it changes from year to year. So in calculating this, you know, we come up with a number, how much goes to each of the municipalities. And then there's two things we take out of it. We have a cooperative program with municipalities on doing stormwater projects. The towns have a financial stake in that. We take that amount out of the gross, and then the municipalities also pay for the salaries of two people who work on these water resources issues. We take that out as well. Doing that is simply a practical matter of, instead of sending them a check and having them send us back a check, we just net it all out to give them the end result. So you can see, we have Manchester, New Windsor, Sykesville, Tawny Town, Union Bridge, and Westminster, all here today. And you have the amounts of funding that will be going to each of them. You can take whatever questions you have, or when you're ready to go. I'm, I'm okay if you just, you know, make a motion to approve all six, or we can do them individually if you'd rather.
So why aren't Hampstead and Mount Airy on here?
We bring them in as we get them back. We, we send them off, they have to approve, you know, the mayor and councils have to act. I think we have, we have gotten the seventh one, I don't remember which one it is, and then that'll probably come in next week, and then-
So we're gonna see the other two at some point in time.
Yes. It's actually pretty unusual. I don't know if I've ever brought six in all at the same time. It usually is one, two, three at a time.
That was my only question, really. It was, where's Mount Airy? But I understand now. Yeah, I, I know this is the formula we've been using for some time. I think you and I had a discussion about this early on, just when I was trying to understand it, so.
Motion to approve the FY twenty-four town-county agreements with the towns of Manchester, New Windsor, Sykesville, Tawny Town, Union Bridge, and Westminster.
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Any discussion? Is anyone in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
And I think we need to verify some of the backup. We have new mayors.
There's wrong mayors listed?
Yeah, yeah. Ryan Warner's no longer mayor of Manchester.
Okay.
It's, Mrs. Smith.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
They'll still take the money.
Let's talk about the bridge program manager contract renewal.
Oh, wait, no, good afternoon.
Is it afternoon?
I got confused for a second.
All good.
No worries.
The Office of Procurement, cooperation with the Bureau of Engineering, posture approval to award a contract to Wilson T. Ballard in the amount not to exceed one hundred fifty-six thousand, four hundred twenty dollars for the bridge program manager. This award will be made from a competitively bid term contract that was awarded to Wilson T. Ballard. These funds are within the adopted twenty twenty-four fiscal year budget.
This contractual Maryland Professional Licensed Engineer will continue to assist the Bureau of Engineering with the management of our bridge program. We estimate, based on their current allocated funding, the contractual engineer will work two days per week. Some of the tasks will include review, design plans for our structural replacement program, manage and shepherd the federal aid projects through the state and federal systems. That's a program where we get either an eighty-twenty percent match on our projects, manage required documentation for this federal funding, and our structural rehabilitation replacement, our annual review, our annual and biannual structural inspection reports for each of our structures, and develop structural maintenance and rehabilitation plans for our projects. We have a good bit of experience with the consultant and staff person, they've been on site for the past three years. We estimate the cost per month to be about a little over thirteen thousand dollars.
I was gonna say, and this, and the, and the next one, are these because it's hard for us to find staff that does it, or is this a specialty enough?
So this one is actually funded in the budget as a contractual position in the operating budget. Um, we felt the workload, um, we couldn't find somebody that we could hire on staff for, for, for the, the workload that we had. Uh, so this one actually is funded through, uh, in the budget as a contractual person. The next one's different.
Yep.
Okay.
Motion to authorize the Bureau of Engineering to utilize the term contract with Wilson T. Ballard for the contractual bridge program manager in the amount not to exceed $156,420 for the 2024 fiscal year.
Second.
I got a motion and second. Discussion, seeing none at all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's talk about the traffic engineer.
Commissioners, this request is to award a contract to Wallace Montgomery in the amount not to exceed $52,000 for contractual traffic engineer. This award is, is, I'm sorry, this award will be made from a competitively bid term contract that was awarded to Mon- Wallace Montgomery. These funds are within the adopted 2024 fiscal year budget as well.
So this is to use a term contract for an onsite consultant, uh, for up to two days a week now for a maximum of six months. The traffic engineering position became vacant in 2020. Since November of 2020, 2021, we've had a consultant three days per week and they've had to reduce the amount of days that they have, um, with this position. Uh, this is not our preference, however, we've not been successful in hiring this position. So we need somebody to do some of the work and this is the best way we've found to do it.
And you're picking six months because you're being optimistic.
We're trying, yes.
Always thinking.
Motion to authorize the Bureau of Engineering to utilize the term contract with Wallace Montgomery for the contractual traffic engineer in the amount not to exceed $52,000.
Second.
I have a motion and second and discussion. Seeing none at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's talk about the 2024 pavement testing.
The Office of Procurement, in cooperation with the Bureau of Engineering, request your approval to award a contract to WSP USA Environment and Infrastructure in the amount of $125,019 to evaluate and provide pavement testing and rehabilitation recommendations for approximately 38.4 miles of roadways. This award will be made from a competitively bid term contract that was awarded to WSP USA Environment and Infrastructure. These funds are within the adopted 2024 fiscal year budget.
So they will be, uh, doing testing on our roadways that we're planning to do our overlay projects in the FY '24, uh, budget. Uh, they will be doing a visual condition, condition survey, non-destructive testing, pavement coring, material sampling, and subgrade soil classification. They will do some laboratory testing of subgrade soils if we, we need to, and then we'll have a final report that will have our pavement and rehabilitation recommendations for those roadways we're planning on paving in FY '24. We only received one proposal from our two consultants. The other consultant said they were not able to perform this work for us. We have used this consultant previously, um, and we expect the report to be sometime in the fall.
The report back to us sometime in the fall?
So they will provide us the report that will, will develop our final bid documents for our FY '24 paving projects. So this'll tell us whether we're gonna reclaim, whether or not we're gonna mill and fill, whether or not we're going to just do an overlay. They'll provide us those recommendations within that report.
You just feel that you're gonna get it timely enough to then come up with, uh, the proposed...
Yes, yes.
Proposed, um, uh, dollar amount. Okay, okay.
Motion to approve the Bureau of Engineering to utilize the term contract with WSP USA Environment and Infrastructure Incorporated in the amount of $125,000, $125,019.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second discussion, seeing none at all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's talk about the workforce development training building.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess needs an HVAC system. At least that's what we're being told.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
All are gonna prove us right, huh?
I'm, uh, filling in for Maureen, she asked me to fill in for her. Um, the Office of Procurement, in cooperation with the Bureau of Facilities, requests your approval to award a contract for the purchase and installation of a new HVAC system, an electrical upgrade for the Carroll County Workforce Development Training Building at 224 North Center Street, Westminster, Maryland, to Fresh Air Concepts from Lythicum, Maryland in the amount of $1,400,000. Funding for this project was included in the plan used for federal fiscal recovery funds and no additional funding is required. Um, the Office of Procurement issued a request for proposal and one proposal was received and evaluation committee was formed to conduct a technical and financial review of the proposal. The committee evaluated the proposal with Fresh Air Concepts achieving good or excellent marks.
Good afternoon, commissioners. We're here today for your approval to award the contract to Fresh Air Concepts for the installation of the central HVAC and electrical upgrade for Carroll County Workforce Development Building. Uh, this is an FRF project that was previously approved by county commissioners. Uh, this upgrade will encompass, uh, the removal of the window units that you see hanging out the windows, um, throughout the entire building and replace with three large JCI uh, package units with a VAV system attached to that, uh, to ensure energy savings and comfort throughout the space. Um, along with the HVAC work, Fresh Air will also be upgrading the electrical service, uh, from 277 to 200, uh, to 480 volt, which will entail, um, more efficient HVAC units. Um, we're here for any questions that you may have. That is the project manager for facilities on this particular job, so, uh, anything that you have any questions on, we could answer at the time.
Is it gonna be a rooftop system?
They're rooftops, but they sit on the ground. The roof was, um, we were considering setting them on the roof. This, the package unit's the same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, these just sit on the ground, it's easier for our maintenance guys and safer.
Yeah.
Um, there's no parapet on that roof, so snowstorms and stuff like that, it could be a little dangerous to be on that roof.
Okay. It's gonna, seems to be a pretty good use of FRF dollars too.
Sure.
So, okay. Cool.
Commissioner Gordon, did you wanna take this, cause it mentions it's District 3?
I can do that, let me find it real quick. I move the Board of County Commissioners award the contract for a new HVAC system and electrical upgrades at 224 North Center Street, Westminster, to Fresh Air Concepts in the amount of $1,400,000.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second and a discussion. Seeing none at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
How'd you guys get to be last?
Save the best for last.
Good answer.
You knew that, you knew you had to come up with that. Have a good day.
You too.
You too.
Say best for last?
Okay, so...
Open admin, Deb, do you have anything?
Yeah.
Maureen, you can come on up for now, do you have anything for us?
No.
No, so the one issue I have, um, briefly is Ms. Carroll, um, scholarship. Last year, we provided a scholarship for, um, Ms. Carroll, um, uh, whatever you, competition. And I believe it was $1,000.
I'll check into that.
Yeah. But whatever it was last year, what I'd like to do is repeat it for this year. The Ms. Carroll competition, uh, the, the contestants are pretty amazing. Um, the one, uh, Ms. Carroll teen is gonna be representing Ms., uh, is gonna be representing Maryland in the Miss, I think, US Teen Pageant. Um, the others from Carroll and Mount Airy and Westminster, uh, have really just, and I have bios on them, are just amazing, uh, young ladies with incredible service hours, uh, involvement with Boys and Girls Club, you know, uh, college students from Johns Hopkins and it goes on. So I would like to, uh, with, you know, your agreeance, uh, provide the same amount in scholarship, um, for this, so that is...
Motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
I don't think there needs to be, I think it's a great opportunity and I think it's a great, uh, option to put out there.
Yep, thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And Deb, just follow up appropriately.
Aye.
Anything else for, uh, open admin? For the, for the community, okay, agendas?
Commissioner?
Yes?
Excuse me, Commissioner. Uh, did you, I've got a call around for public comment.
I apologize, uh, thanks, Chris. Uh, usually that's before I say public comment.
I'm waiting to the end, I'm waiting to the end.
Okay, this is the end.
No. Uh, oh, it's not on this, it's not on this topic, but...
I, I apologize.
It's general comment. I was waiting till the end to make a general comment.
Okay, please do.
Three minutes.
You, you want that now?
Yes ma'am, you, uh, say your name, where you're from, and you'll have three minutes, uh, for your comment.
Okay, well, I didn't mean to interrupt the agenda there, I was waiting patiently until the end, but I will go ahead. My name is Catherine Adelaide, I'm a member of the Carroll County Republican Central Committee, um, speaking as I did last time as a member, not for the entire committee. And, um, first of all, it's, I really enjoy hearing you guys doing all this great work you're doing down there, so I really commend you on that, I'm gonna be listening in more often. Um, just to, to refresh you, um, I represent at large all the Republicans in Carroll County and, uh, you represent by districts. I also represent the RNC platform, which follows the federal law on pot rightly. Um, Commissioner Rothstein, um, you did mention earlier about dealing with other junk like pot, so I appreciate that comment. You also mentioned that, you know, some of your comments have been taken out of context and that has certainly happened to me in the Carroll County Times, which we won't go into at the moment, but there was an article that covered, uh, my First Amendment protest that occurred on July, uh, well, June 30th, or whatever the last day of June was before the July 1st enactment date. And on July 3rd, they did, uh, they did, did not quote me out of context, they quoted me very much in context and so the purpose of the protest, um, was to exercise my First Amendment rights. They kind of agreed with that and it is a universal con- well, it's an American concept at least. And, um, also, um, just the health and safety factor and the timing of the initiative. So I did wanna thank all the commissioners for doing the joint, um, statements that you did with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office to put people on a higher alert, I haven't had time to investigate, you know, what the impact was of that, but y'all did the right thing, I really appreciate that. And so, anyway, now I, I did wanna do a little follow-up with, um, you know, I'm aware that this has been referred to, uh, planning and zoning in terms of zoning law, but, um, to me, the higher law than the zoning law is the Congressional Act, which places it in the Schedule I drug with heroin, LSD, and ecstasy. So it's still illegal, um, you know, I'm not targeting the medical, but the recreational is completely over the top. Um, I'm glad you're all, you know, Republicans, you ascribe to the RNC platform, as do I. I am not bipartisan, I'm very partisan, and the platform, our Republican platform, RNC platform, refers back to the congressional law and, and defers to that, as it rightly should, so, but that's not just an opinion by the RNC, that's really the law. So the proper procedure, I'm just trying to give you some talking points, cause there'll be a lot of kickback on this, I'm sure. The proper procedure is to remove pot from the federal Schedule I before you enact a state law and then get all the people to vote on it. So things have been completely reversed, this is not a states' rights issue, this is not a voice of the people may and how they vote issue. I do have a hard time believing close to 60% of the population of Carroll County voted for recreational pot, but that's irrelevant. The state law is irrelevant because they have not followed the legal procedure to change a congressional statute. And if a congressional statute isn't enough, we have Article 6 of the US Constitution, which is the supremacy clause.
I apologize, if you can, if you can, uh, finish up your comments.
Okay, so that's, that's, anyway, um, I would ask you to consider a temporary moratorium on recreational pot, at least until your zoning and planning comes back, and to, um, really formulate a policy, as I am doing within the Central Committee, uh, on policy, to follow the federal law. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No ma'am, thank you. Monday, July 17th, we have nothing scheduled. July 18th, Commissioner Gordon will be participating in the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, at 9:00 AM and then at 2:00 PM, he along with Commissioner Kyler will be participating in the Veterans Advisory Meeting over at the American Legion. Wednesday evening, there's a ESAC Emergency Services Advisory Council where Commissioner Garin will be participating. And then on Thursday, July 20th, we go into open session at 09:00. Presentation of the 2022 Carroll County Planning Annual Report, Payroll HR Management System Update, Discussion and Possible Adoption of E-Bike Ordinance, Contract Renewal On-Call Solid Waste Engineering Services, and then Contract Renewal On-Call Solid Waste Engineering Services. Wait a second.
One services.
One's FY '23, one's FY '24. And then On-Call User Support and Hosting Services for the City Works Asset Management Um, we will also, uh, add to that agenda as discussed, um, impact fees. Okay, then we will go into closed for land acquisition. On Friday, July 21st, I will be participating, that's virtual, cool, um, in the Baltimore Metropolitan Council Board of Directors Meeting. Saturday, nothing scheduled. Sunday, uh, podcast scheduled, Commissioner Gordon will be providing. July 24th, 25th, 26th, nothing scheduled. 27th, which is Thursday, we have open session starting at 9:00. Proposed use for not in Carroll funding, uh, committed for opioid issues for fiscal year 2024. Looking forward to that conversation. Our Health Department along with our Boys and Girls Club and, uh, DCS will be, uh, in attendance, um, to share their thoughts and ideas. Uh, grant approval for submission for the FY '25 Jurisdictional Family Services Grant. Uh, Judge Hecker will be, uh, attending and presenting at FY, and then we'll have FY '23 Operating Year End Adjustments from, uh, Mr. Zaleski. We will then have an exercise option to purchase the Cal Trevor Franklin and Mark Warren Franklin property through the Critical Farms Program. We will then go into closed for land acquisition, nothing scheduled Friday or Saturday, and Commissioner Garin has the podcast. How'd I do, Maureen, okay? Any additions or subtractions or... Tim, did I do okay for you? Okay, as long as I did, okay. Okay, I need a motion to, uh, go into closed and then a, after that, to adjourn.
So moved.
Closed for land acquisition.
Yes.
Closed for land acquisition.
So moved, second.
I got a motion, I got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.